Hi, everyone. Welcome. I didn't realize City Council was the place to be on Monday night, but it's nice to see all of you. Thank you for being here with us for our July 24th, 2023 council meeting. A few notes as always before we start. We do have all of our council and many of our staff here in person, but we continue to have some staff and members of the public joining virtually. So I continue to go back and forth between Zoom and in person. So just please give me some grace as I do that. And we do take breaks every ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes. We start every council meeting with our open comment period, and this is a chance for any of you from the public who would like to speak on an item that we will otherwise not be taking public testimony on later in the agenda. Would have up to four minutes for a total of up to twenty minutes, although I will take a list, look at the list and see how we're doing time wise and ask my council colleagues to consider whether we need to suspend the rules if there is more time needed. Just note that we ask that you keep things as concise as possible to give others a chance to speak that you, we welcome feedback, but we also ask that you are respectful in how you deliver that and that you speak to me as the presiding officer of the meeting. We don't follow up directly on items during the public comment period, but if there are items that require follow up, we do ask staff to follow up. Let's see. I will go back and forth between whether there is somebody attending virtually or whether we, you are here in person using the list I have. I'll ask the clerk, I think clerk Giesler, if there's somebody joining virtually that you let me know so I don't have to ask you every single time. And with that, I will invite you to come up in order to are signed up and I will start with. When the phone stops ringing, Marion Dick to come up and please introduce yourself. There are a couple of ways I keep track of time. There's a little stoplight right here and then there's the timer on the wall. I'm just logging into Zoom, so excuse me if I look away for a second. You're ready?
I'm ready. Thank you. Hello, my name is Marion Dick from six ten Memorial Parkway Southwest. Thank you for the opportunity to comment about an urgent question you face tonight. I speak on behalf of my neighbors on Seventh Avenue and Memorial Parkway about the Southwest Trail Connection Plan. The matter is urgent because of the fact that at the park board meeting tomorrow night, Mike Nickber intends to ask for the board's final approval of the project bids. Unless you act tonight, this project tainted with untruths, half baked planning and inappropriate spending of park levy funds will go forward. During the April seventeenth council meeting, the mayor expressed concern that we had not spoken up earlier in the process. In fact, we have been raising issues about this proposed trail for the past ten years. But we have been excluded or ignored at every key point in the process. The first exclusion occurred in twenty fourteen. We were never proactively contacted by the city as stakeholders during consideration of the Soldier's Field Master Plan. The proposed trail abuts sixteen backyards on Seventh Avenue and Memorial Parkway. Are we then not stakeholders? The idea is inconceivable. In fact, our involvement only came about because we contacted Mr. Nickber and Mr. Widman about our concerns. We also spoke to the park board about our opposition to the plan. Our concerns at that time were totally ignored and we were metaphorically patted on the back and told that nothing would happen for the project with the project for at least ten years. Aside from a single postcard regarding surveying, we have never been contacted directly regarding the trail plans. Here's one example of how Mike Nickber failed to approach or engage with us. He applied for the DNR Trail Connections Grant in March of twenty twenty two with no notice to us. At a park board meeting, board member Richard Dale asked why Mr. Nickber was applying for a state grant for the trail. Months before the Soldier's Field Master Plan had even been opened for public comment. Mr. Dale said, quote, seems to me that we're jumping the gun here. We should cool our heels and see what the master plan says. Mike Nickber stated when referring to the trail, and I am quoting directly from the meeting video, this current master plan will not change. Change the trail. I guarantee that. Again, the trail on the west side will not change. It's not changing. So in March twenty twenty two, before the plans were finalized or the public had commented, Mike Nickber had already stated, in fact guaranteed that he would be unwilling to change the plan for the trail. In so doing, he implied that even in the face of future public opposition on the matter, nothing would change. From the beginning of this project to today, we have been purposefully overlooked, misled and deceived. Community engagement was a sham. How are we as citizens supposed to be engaged in such a flawed process riddled with untruths, deceptions, misinformation and deliberate exclusion? We respectfully request your urgent action on this matter tonight. The people of Rochester deserve far better than this. We ask that you uphold the democratic process, which if rightly applied, assumes transparency, checks and balances and facts. We ask that you do this not only for us, but also for the entire Rochester community. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody is joining virtually, you use the raise. We don't do clapping in our audience. Thank you. So if you are joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. And we will be sure to call on you. All right, Ian Jarman.
Good evening, council president and council members. I'm Ian Jarman from six twenty Memorial Parkway. I'd like to comment on the status of the Southwest Trail Project on behalf of my neighborhood and former city staff members that have contacted me with their concerns. On April seventeenth, when the council voted here to approve the Southwest Trail for bid, Mike Nickber linked it to the DMC grant. In fact, the funding source is very clear from his application for the grant in twenty twenty two. Two hundred fifty thousand from the grant, one hundred and thirty five thousand of matching funds from the city of Rochester Park Levy. Hundred thousand for golf course modifications, not eligible for the trail grant, a total of four hundred eighty four thousand and critically no DMC funding, no relation to DMC. Now, major elements have been added with additional costs. Accelerating public spending by years for the partial construction of a stormwater project, even though the Public Works Department themselves state that the full project hasn't risen to a high priority enough to be in the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine capital improvement plan. In addition, the plan now says to widen an existing well maintained trail section between Sixth Street and Memorial Parkway from eight feet to twelve feet, when only a few feet of this section are actually required to be replaced, replaced even for the stormwater project. In the March seventh park board meeting, Mr. Nickber stated clearly, the project would not come back to the park board for bid approval. I quote Mr. Nickber from the video, council has retained that authority for referendum dollars for Soldier's Field and it goes back to them. But at the park board meeting tomorrow night, Mike Nickber intends to ask for the final approval to execute contract documents for Soldier's Field, including a portion of the Southwest Trail. So what does that mean? Mike Nick's plan is now to construct the trail from both ends with a gap in the middle. And no plan for the narrow pinch point, which has been always the question all along. The design actually states section of trail to be determined and constructed later. The design document now does not even mention the three concepts apparently being considered. Using the bridge from Ninth Street, a new cantilever bridge or retaining wall in the floodway of the Zumbro River. That small section is fifty two percent of the overall project cost and there's no clear pan planned to execute it. The Southwest Trail Connection is also overdesigned at twelve feet. DNR guidelines, which we got in here as well as other backup material, say ten feet is optimal on city trails. The South Sumbo Trail by Hy-Vee was widened in twenty nineteen to ten feet. The new trails inside Soldier's Field Park itself are going to be ten feet wide. The Douglas State Trailhead in Rochester is ten feet wide. In summary, without your intervention tonight, Mike Nickber will build the Southwest Trail Connection funded by a DNL, DNR, local trails connection grant that does not even connect. This project needs to be reconsidered and we ask for your urgent action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jarman. All right, Barbara Tomlin. Go ahead.
Barbara Tomlin, six twenty Memorial Parkway, commenting on the Southwest Trail Connection. As a city council, you face a critical decision tonight. This issue goes way beyond a bike trail. It's an issue of your responsibility as policymakers elected by the people to control how referendum funds are spent and to uphold standards of integrity and simple truth in government. Fiscal responsibility and good government. These are basic tasks that we, the people of Rochester, have entrusted to you. I wish to address the lack of integrity, transparency, and I'm sorry to say it, truth and the process leading to your April vote to keep the Southwest Trail Connection in the Soldier's Field Memorial Park Project. False information was given to the park board, the neighbors most directly affected by the proposed trail and to you, this council. We outlined these untruths in a letter to you on May thirty first. We are entering that letter into this meeting's record since we never received a response. The most impactful untruth was Mike Nickber's statement during the April seventeen council meeting that removing the proposed trial from the Soldier's Field Project would require returning to the DMC for reapproval of the Soldier's Field Project Grant. That's simply not true. The DMC grant doesn't cover the trail. It's not even in the DMC district. But this information directly affected your council vote. I think we can all agree here tonight that the Southwest Trail Connection is in no way connected to the DMC. We respectfully request that you ask the city administrator and city attorney here in this meeting tonight for a public clarification on this point. It's important to set the record straight. We believe that the appropriate remedy for this situation must be to reconsider this issue. It's an issue of good government, of procedure, policy and integrity for Rochester as a city. As council members, you rightly rely upon truth and integrity from city staff. And that's what you get from our highly respected and trusted city staff every day. But what happens when a rogue staff member makes false statements to influence your council vote? Can that vote really stand with no ability for you to reconsider? Surely as policymakers, you must uphold the requirements for transparency, truthfulness and integrity in all council meetings. Enabling this behavior ensures that it will continue. To summarize, the Southwest Trail Connection funded by a connection grant does not connect. The Southwest Trail Connection still plants a bridge to nowhere. The Trail Connection includes new and unnecessary public spending. The true cost of the Trail Connection is hidden in other projects. The Southwest Trail Connection is partly funded by city of Rochester Park Levy money, which you control. The Southwest Trail Connection is a case study in ill conceived planning and fiscal irresponsibility. This project has gone badly wrong. Now that wrong must be righted. We respectfully ask that tonight you fulfill your responsibility to restore truth, integrity and common sense to this process. We respectfully ask that you tonight revisit the issue of the Southwest Trail Connection. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jim Niehoff.
Good evening. My name is Jim Niehoff, Rochester. Thank you for this time and your kind attention to my comments. This will be my fourth and final American state national education outreach to this city council. We live in an amazing time. We are all blessed and we are all blessed to play a role in what I believe is world history in the making. I believe that in the decades and centuries to come, volumes will be written about what is taking place in our world today. I am proud to be party to a group of intelligent, free thinking Americans who have discovered the truth about the birth certificate fraud and have chosen to do something about it. As I explained in my last presentation, shortly after we are born, we are all unlawfully converted from American state nationals to US citizens. I always also explain the significance of this conversion and how it changes our relationship to government. American state nationals are not anti-government, quite the contrary. We understand the critical role government plays in a civilized society. After all, we are party to we the people, the creator of government. We believe the constitution that we wrote created the perfect earthly government, a government limited in scope and power. A government that freed the American people to live life to their fullest potential and not a government that attempts to define every aspect of what that potential should look like. So we are now at a crossroads in American and world history, and it is time for us all to choose which path we are going to take. Are we going to choose the path of freedom and liberty? Or are we going to choose the path of slavery in the New World Order? American state nationals have chosen the former, the path of freedom and liberty by taking the steps necessary necessary to correct their status and removing themselves from your jurisdiction. What this means is that the only way government will be able to interact with us is through the pathway of common law. The simplest illustration I can give you for this, if there is no physical injury or property damage, then there is no crime. Understandably, this will not set well with those of you who desire a government that attempts to dictate every aspect of our existence so long as you are in control. American state nationals only desire to live, only desire is to live as God intended, to live in peace, to love our neighbor and to do no harm. The only question remaining is, will you support us in this endeavor? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Gil Strand. Use yourself and you have four minutes. Here's the timer and up on the wall.
Good evening. As you said, my name is Gil Strand. I've been a resident of Rochester since nineteen sixty five. I live in Ward Six, Precinct Nine. Molly Dennis is my elder woman and I'm familiar with her censure and restrictions on her efforts to do her job in representing me in World Six. I'm thankful for this opportunity and freedom to speak at this time. I appear in opposition to the proposed property tax increase during these post COVID and inflationary times where most families in Rochester have been forced to adjust and cut their family budgets to maintain their lifestyle while you have set forth to increase the city budget with this tax increase at a time when the city department heads should be engaged with finding ways to decrease their budgets. Snuggle up buttercup, they say. We do not need a hundred million dollar sports complex at this time, really. We've got a wonderful balloon facility at the regional educational complex that sits empty or uninflated most of the time. In contrast to your budgetary visions for an advanced multi-use facility. Would we have enough hotel rooms to support this need? Would ticket price be appropriate? Or the events rival Mayo Clinic Center events? We are now facing many new issues with legal marijuana distribution stores or kiosks in our city and the lawful control and jurisdiction thereof.
Just gonna gently redirect you since we are taking a public hearing on that later, so we can't take comment on that topic right now. You're welcome.
My state.
During item G one.
I hope there would be some direction to an, to a a better grandstand at Graham Arena.
Great.
Or various improvements to Soldier's Field. I'll direct my attention to the people deserve and expect responsible, sound, honest leadership from our council to ensure productive development and security for our community without the interference from Michael Bloomberg and his New York philosophies to influence that focus. We need not any Bloomberg interns on the second floor of our city government facility learning how to adopt whatever that big money might buy and hiring here will while taking space from our elected city representatives. So while we are while our state has amassed some billions of dollars in surplus revenue from our overtaxing, we people. Do we strive here to accomplish the same by overtaxing and promising future reductions and maybe refunds in addition? We won't hold our breath. Things are not all great and wonderful here in this river city and we must account for our decline in academic strength standing in our state. The unrealistic neglect to focus on energy and water and health and general welfare of our city. Electric light rail is a joke. So is wind and solar power. We know. And raising our property tax is not the answer to these problems. With more time, more study, more positive and sound results will be attained. will be attained, and prayer is always a great tool.
Mr. Strand.
We simply cannot afford your tax plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention and thoughtful consideration. And I don't hope that you would consider being a dope-free community.
Mr. Strand, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I know people. I know people are passionate about these topics, but we do need you to be respectful. Thank you. Westland. Come on up.
I, Westland, wish to rescind my time this month. I didn't have a chance to speak this month, but I'll put me off till next month to give our other people here of our town a chance to talk.
Thank you, sir.
Right, and I that it has been about twenty minutes. We do have one more speaker who I can't read the writing. First name starts with an L, last name starts with an R.
I'm going to suspend the rule so we can complete the signed-up speakers for open comment.
Second, was that Lee, Lee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that you? All right.
So do we need? One second, sir. Do we need to?
Give me one second. We'll just call the vote and then we will move on. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion carries. We have extended, so you can speak.
Okay, thank you. I'm Lee Flarson. I live right across the river here on Eleventh Avenue Southeast. And I want to say I fully agree with the previous speaker, one hundred percent. I feel the same thing. I'm kind of, I can't believe the call for a tax increase. I think it's almost ten percent more on top of everything else. You know what? Things were high to begin with, and then COVID hit. A lot of people, a lot of things were shut down. People lost their jobs, for crying out loud. And then, and then we're fear-mongering, and then I hear, okay, we're supposed to shelter in place. It sounds so innocent. That's a good way, shelter in place, lockdown. And you're only allowed out if you're, what, essential was the word? Well, I'm self-employed, paying houses. Am I essential? I felt guilty to go to work, but then I thought, well, by cracky, if I don't go to work, who's going to pay my mortgage? Who's going to pay my bills? Who's going to feed me? You know what? So I thought, I'm going to go, and boy, by cracky, if someone asks me, I got something to say. You want to do all that? You know, what's going on here? I gotta work or I'm going to go broke. And that went on for like, what, three years? Anyway. And I'm self-employed. I'm seventy-one years old. Tomorrow's my birthday. I'll be seventy-one. And I, and you know what? I'm still working. People ask me, you still working? Yeah, I took retirement, but I cannot survive without working. And even though I might not look seventy-one, I feel seventy-one. Okay, I'm going to get on with my points. Now, okay, so after all this COVID, okay, I have a triplex over there, and I live, I'm an owner. I live in it, and I rent two apartments. Soon as COVID hit, the gal that wasn't paying rent before, behind, 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 she just said, oh, guess what? You, there's no evictions during COVID. I didn't get another cent thanks to our governor, Walls, because, oh, they can't be evicted. That means they don't have to pay rent. And she stayed until finally, yeah, almost COVID was over, and she left. But, and then I thought, do I want to put someone else in there? And it's, I gotta pay the utilities too, because I don't have separate meters. So I mean, it's just like, so I, I am pressed, pressed, pressed. Then I see budgets for, and spending for all kinds of nonsense like the, the bike trails in the streets and painting and all this stuff. I drive down East Center Street, and I have not seen a bicycle since that paint was on there in those parks. I haven't seen one! And, and you know what? I, I'm afraid to pass on a big truck, and two trucks couldn't pass without hitting those poles. I mean, do we really need that, Jim? Anyway, I doubt it. So anyway, now, now we're getting taxes more, and you know, it's just like, true, true leaders should know their representatives and take care of them. And when stuff like this comes, we had a, he mentioned the budget. We had a huge surplus. And guess what? You know, I think they said, oh, we're going to give some money back, like two hundred and sixty dollars, something like that, I heard, if we ever see it. But that's a slap in the face considering how many, how much money. That's a kick in the teeth. And then repair all the sidewalks, a huge thing. I had to repair my own and pay full for it when, a couple of years back, when during COVID, oh, fix all the sidewalks.
Mr. Larson, it's time to wrap up.
Okay, DMC. It's all DMC, right? You know what? When I came back, it's out of the country, destroy my city is what they said that.
All right, thank you.
And you keep raising taxes, it's going to mean destination Mabel Cant.
All right, thank you. Not happening. Clapping.
Your Supreme Court law, it's not disruptive.
Ms. Madison, please, we have state statute to set our rules for our council chambers. I'm not going to get into this with you. We will officially call the meeting to order. Assistant Clerk Garak, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
City Administrator Ms. Alms, please go ahead with your report.
Certainly. Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public. Always appreciate seeing you here. We always start this off by thanking our teammates for always leading with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind as they deliver city services to everyone who lives here. So just want to give them a shout out and thank all of our teammates out in the field, in the office, et cetera, for all the work that they put in to deliver on that mission. Also, I have a couple of brief things to highlight this evening. Our partners at Our Neighbors, one of the groups that we provide a small amount of funding to, did provide a small grant to the Hispanic Walking in Nature Group, and that has gotten folks connected throughout the community, meeting one of our community goals, heading out to the variety of different parks that are available that our community enjoys. So thank you to our Parks teammates for keeping those up for everyone and to our partners at Our Neighbors for providing that opportunity for a community to connect. Also wanted to just point out that there are a couple of opportunities also with some partners coming up. They are working with the Explore Minnesota program at Rochester Art Center and Spark Children's Museum to provide freer, reduced-cost programming in September. So you can go to exploreminnesota.com to get your passport and find out all of the opportunities that you have locally in Rochester and seventy-one locations around Minnesota to be able to participate in that Passport to Family Fund. Also, of course, our partners at Olmsted County are kicking off the Olmsted County Fair that kicked off today. There are a number of opportunities to participate in that at free or no charge. There is five-dollar parking on the grounds, and there are paid tickets required for rides, but there are a number of other activities that are available to the public for free, the free stage, as well as some of the agricultural exhibits. And of course, entry is free to the fair. So olmstedcountyfair.com has more information. And then just pointing out that investment that was made in the past, we did have our two additional new flyer, Excelsior Sixties, join the fleet. This last week, they will be getting out on the road. So those are larger, larger bus that serve routes throughout the city, provide more capacity for ridership and a positive impact on the environment. And that's what I have today to share.
Thank you. Ms. Alms, Mayor Norton.
Wonderful. I've got a couple of slides of my own. Except it's not working. There we go. I might need some help, folks. One more. So just a reminder that the, I think this is the fourth Safe City Nights is occurring this week, tomorrow, Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, from six to eight PM at Harriet Bishop Elementary. And if you haven't been out to the new school, I say new, and it's been around for a year now, but it's very different than what was there previously. It might be a nice opportunity for you to take a look at the new school as well as enjoy the Safe City Night activities. Again, you know, Canadian Hunkers provides free meals for people. There are many booths with information about law enforcement, very well-attended and very well-received event, so invite you to that. This is another Our Neighbors event, Chalk the Block. I want you to put this on your calendars. It will be Saturday, September thirtieth this year, and they're going to do a little bit of a different twist on this. It will be held out at Grand Park, the fairgrounds. They will be using the parking lot for the canvas, if you will, for the community and for some professional artists. So put that on your, your calendar and stop out to that. Next, we have the Bus Rodeo. And this is a competition for transit drivers around the state. They were in our community this weekend. There was a local competition. And Chris Daniel Senior, who is one of our transit drivers, won in the large bus category for the second year in a row. I believe I saw that he's won four times over the last ten years or so, so that's really cool. I did stop out to their meal, and there were two other awards given to small bus and all-around driving. So it was just really a nice opportunity for them to showcase their skills, and, and it really does take a lot of skill and talent to drive those big buses and do it well. And these are the, these were the cream of the crop, and we talked about their theme was the era of corn water tower, so creamed corn, if you will. Next, I have just a couple of comments I wanted to make, and I'm going to hand this down, and maybe I'll just take one and pass it. This is some information. I did go to the NLC Summer Board and Leadership Conference in Tacoma, Washington for two days, and we had the opportunity to visit some homeless shelters while we were there, and we got to visit three different types. So I'm just, the one up on the slide right now is one of the three. This was a family site. And so those little houses that you see in the bottom-left corner, each family has their own tiny home. They have a kitchen and an area that they got half a refrigerator. They share refrigerator space. There's a playground. So I provided a little information about that, and the capacity was fifty units, fifty beds. Some of the families were a different size, but it was clean. It is on a church property, actually. The church donated the land for the fenced-in area which held the homes. You can see on the right side what it looks like from the parking lot of the church. Behind it is actually a senior center, and the seniors actually rejected and resisted this being built, and now are the greatest advocates for it and volunteer regularly to support the children in the area and are huge advocates for it. So that was one example. The next one is pallet homes, which I think probably the bottom-right picture shows what they've done. They put them indoors in a bubble arena or bubble canvassed area. They do not have to be inside. This was just what they chose to do. I asked about it, and they said if they had to do it again, starting from scratch, the homes are built better now and don't need to be in the, in the covered area. While they can be, they didn't need to be, and they probably wouldn't cover them the next time. You can see that would be the, I believe that's the top one. So those are the pallet shelters. They're low barrier. They have a number of staff, fifty-eight units, a hundred beds. So that just gives you an idea. They're very neat and tidy. Everybody has their own area and takes care of it quite well. And then the last one. Thank you, is, and actually, they still allow tents, and they're Eskimo tents, so they're good for all weather, apparently. This was a, these are all considered temporary shelters until they can get people moved from a safe environment where everyone knows where they are, can, they can be cared for, their staff on hand, their shower facilities, washing machines, that they have social workers, chemical dependency counselors that offer services, and then the idea is to move them from these shelters step up into supportive housing. So these were just three of the examples, and as I said, I got a little information on that sheet of paper there, but I just have to say, I continue to get calls, as we all do, about the homeless in town. There is a task force that meets. I don't think any elected officials are on that, but I really would like the council to give some serious thought as to whether this isn't something we want to partner with the county on. The county is working really hard to provide housing, and they have several projects. I just heard from HUD this last week. But those, those houses, those apartments, those supportive housing units won't be open till twenty twenty-five. And we have winter coming. We do not, we haven't, we have more homeless than we do warming shelter beds. And, and we're struggling right now with people moving around town and chasing tents throughout the city, which isn't a great use of our, our police officers who, you know, should be caring for the safety of this community. So I'm raising this now because I really think with some of the funds that we have set aside, the they were ARPA funds, they're under a different topic or title now. I think it might be worth considering partnering with the county and seeing if we can't do a temporary, these are temporary shelters, not permanent, until we can get that housing built. So I just raised this, and it was a very interesting tour of the city, and I was really impressed with the care and compassion given by the staff at these units. But it does help, their, their goal was ninety-five percent of the point of pointing count that we do every year, there's a point and count survey done, and they, the City of Tacoma guarantees ninety-five percent space, and the other five percent come and go. They're a little more transient through the community, but that's their goal. They don't have it perfect, but they've got a lot of shelter for a lot of people. And the last is, again, my reminder, my, seems like every other week, reminder that we do still have board and commission vacancies. I received one today from a Planning and Zoning Commission member who's working away from the community now, will not be available to attend the Planning and Zoning meetings any longer. I do have a whole list of names from before on that commission. So I open, you know, want to open it up to the community, put their names in if they're interested, but we also have a lot of great candidates who put their name in over the past several months. So, and again, the Park Board, Word Four. And at this point, I think I'm just going to close that and leave our member on if we don't hear from someone about that. And the music board still has an opening in Ward Six. That's it for me.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Moving on to approving the order of the agenda, I haven't been informed of any new changes since just some minor tweaks over the weekend, and it's been reposted, right? Clerk Geisler, just double-checking. All right, you could just shake your head. Okay. All right, so if there aren't any other changes, I'd invite a motion.
I'd move to approve the order of the agenda as presented.
Right, Councilmember Keen.
Nothing to add.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Dennis is pulling items F-six and F-nine. Anything else?
I have a lot of concerns from residents about sidewalks, so I pulled those two items to address those concerns. However, I have reached out and connected with staff, and a lot of the questions haven't answered, and we've referred back to the residents, so I'm going to rescind my pulling of those two items.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennis. All right, so if there isn't anything else, I'd invite motion to approve and block items F-one through fourteen.
So move. Okay.
Councilmember Bransford.
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to our public hearings, which I know a lot of you here in the audience are eager for. So we always go through the process of the public hearings before we start. So we initially do a staff introduction to the item before we open it up for the applicant or representative of the applicant to speak for up to ten minutes. And then open the public hearing, same rules basically as the open comment, except you have five minutes, and there's no timeline limit, although we do expect that you are as concise as possible. And then close the public hearing. The applicant has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes. Then my colleagues can ask questions of either the applicant or staff before we have a motion, discussion, and vote. The first item on our agenda is a continuation of the hearing we opened at our last meeting on July tenth. So it is around approving a proposed ordinance for cannabis. And I will let Clerk Geisler introduce the item before we reopen the continued public hearing.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor Norton, council members. Just a few comments before we get started. First, I want to remind you all that, that we agree, that we voted and approved in the order of agenda at the last meeting to eliminate the language about the per capita restriction on businesses. And what we're considering tonight is the temporary prohibition of any new cannabis businesses till January first, twenty twenty-five. And I think I'll reserve any other comments that I have for after the public is heard. And just, I think it serves to mention now that we cannot prohibit cannabis completely. The state law does not allow for that. So I just want to say that. The state law does not allow for that. So I just want to say that outright at the beginning. And I will save any other comments for after the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk Geisler. Okay, so we had a few people speak at the last. Or when we started the public hearing, so those people will not be able to speak again, but otherwise I'll work through the list. Clerk Geisler, please let me know if anyone is joining virtually who would like to speak. Those who are, use the raise hand function and do zoom or press star nine. And it looks like we already have a hand up, so I'm actually going to start with the person on Zoom. Marian Schrader or Schroder, please unmute yourself and go ahead when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Thank you, councilmembers, Mayor Norton and staff. My name is Marian Schroder and I actually live down in Stortville. But I've been a medical cannabis patient advocate for the past 10 years. I worked extensively on the chapter 342 cannabis legalization legislation as the coalition director for Minnesota is ready. And I'm now working as a licensing and government relations consultant for Minnesota businesses hoping to enter the new industry. I understand that the legislation allows for moratoriums to go as late as January 1 of 2025. But I urge the council to adjust that moratorium to account for the cultivation, processing and manufacturing businesses. That hope to start their non-customer facing businesses as soon as the state is prepared to issue licenses. As early as this time next year. To be, to be clear, I don't have any current clients in the Rochester area, but I have been informally working with a couple local. Rochester-based entrepreneurs looking to develop the industrial side of their business in the city. One of those businesses is led by a gentleman who actually spent eight years in federal prison for transporting cannabis. Something that is now legal in 22 states and will be legal in Minnesota in just a few short days. These are the folks that this legislation hopes to help. Those that are negatively impacted by its prohibition. Rochester is lucky to have Green Goods serving the patients in our area, but they are also a large international cannabis company. That has its cultivation and manufacturing operations elsewhere and would be grandfathered in under any moratorium in that community. This means that Green Goods, an international cannabis company, would likely be in the adult use market ahead of those small businesses. Seeking to establish cultivation and manufacturing operations in the city of Rochester. I fully understand the desire to study the issue, but this can be done without a formal moratorium that will hurt those local businesses. Non-retail licenses are expected to be issued next summer with retail operations beginning in early 2025. The city would not have any operational cannabis businesses until such time the state is ready to issue licenses. Regardless of a moratorium. However, a moratorium could very well delay the ability for those businesses to plan. And complete their applications for licensing, disadvantaging those local businesses from the start. Tonight, I urge you to forego a moratorium, shorten the length of any moratorium to July or August 1 of 2024. Or exclude the cultivation and manufacturing of cannabis and cannabis products from the moratorium. Thank you for taking the time to hear me tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right, Casey McGregor.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Casey McGregor. Council's responsibility is to create policies to govern the districts and make sure any current or new laws serve the needs of the people. Who live and work there. I am not pro cannabis, I'm not anti cannabis. This is bad legislation. Have you sat down and read the 163 pages? I will leave this printed copy with the clerk. I also have. The ANC, I have printed a copy for each of you. They want to push back against this bill. And we want to encourage the city of Rochester and Olmsted to stand against this piece of legislation. To do it to protect Minnesota, do it to protect the children that live in this state, make the legislators. They, if they want to approve cannabis, at least they can do some kind of restraint and public safety attachments. There are 22 states that allow cannabis. This legislation written is the most extreme out of the 22 states. The first three, Oregon, California and Colorado, and they don't look like healthy role models. Let's dive into a few things I have pulled out of this bill. Number one, this bill allows people to grow eight plants, four to maturity and four small. But the fine doesn't kick in until you hit 16 plants. The major fine doesn't kick in until you hit 23 plants. And plants can grow as tall as 14 feet. So how does the black market of cannabis stop? If this much cannabis can be grown in everybody's home? The Minnesota Constitution, Article 13, Section 7, says in Minnesota, you have the right to sell things that you grow. And the constitution trumps your ordinance. If you grow it, you can sell it without a license. Number two, Minnesota restricts employees, employers from testing or firing employees that use cannabis. Blackballing business owners. Number three, local speakers, I have heard talk about the cartel already having occupancy here in Rochester. I've asked one question, why don't we see more crime that entails the cartel? I was told because we don't have competing cartels. Once the cannabis bill is allowed, the chance of having competing cartels in Rochester dramatically increases. Prior to the information in other states. Number four, where do the dispensaries get their cannabis from? Is this cannabis trafficked into Minnesota? Are you opening up trafficking lines? Do we know any statistics on cartel involvement in the dispensaries? Number five, the CBD shops that are already selling THC, are they considered dispensaries now? Number six, in August, this became legal in the state of Minnesota. In New York, they waited a year and a half after it became legal. What happened is legal illegal cannabis stores opened. And now the legal cannabis stores are opening and they're having a problem getting rid of the illegal ones that went in in that year and a half. So what will Rochester's plans be? Number seven, what happens in the public venue locations like Thursdays on First, Forward Music, Sunday in the Park? Is it going to be one cloud of marijuana come August? Eight, I think it's absolutely disgusting that we have a Minnesota representative putting pictures of himself doing drugs on his Facebook feed. For children to see. Will there be a five degree of separation between elected officials being able to dispense, own a dispensary or a venue? So they're not profiting from the legislation they are writing. Number nine, I have included an application for firearm. For council's viewing. The federally, it states the use of possession or marijuana remains unlawful under federal law. Regardless of whether it has been legalized or decriminalized for medical or recreational purposes. So are you giving up your Second Amendment rights to choose to use cannabis? 10, does anybody remember the commercial from the 80s when they put the egg in the hot frying pan and said, this is your brain on drugs? Any questions? You will not be able to do that anymore because in this bill, you will be stigmatizing drugs. You will not be allowed to teach children not to do drugs because it's stigmatizing. 11, the New York Post wrote an article, a study published by Clinical Toxicology Report. At, they had a 245% jump in one, in one number of calls related to marijuana use. Among six to 18-year-olds, six-year-olds from 2000 to 2020. And in 2020 alone, received 1,800 such calls. Rochester, Olmsted County and the state of Minnesota, all counties, all commissioners, all cities, I beg you to push back against this awful piece of legislation. And join the ANC Foundation and push back for the children of Minnesota. This is bad legislation.
Can you hand your, yep, announce to the clerk? All right, moving on, we have John Whalen, Whalen. That is the warning for those of you who clap next, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. I've asked you four times already.
I, I don't think we'll have to worry about them clapping for mine. So my, my summary title is, don't let Rochester go to pot. This is Minnesota's third largest city and I don't get out that much, but I don't think we have a strip club. Or a for-profit dirty bookstore. The not-for-profits, public library, Rochester Public Schools, hmm, maybe. Philippians 48. Says, whatever is true, noble, right. Pure, lovely, admirable, excellent and praiseworthy. Think about such things. Once again, the political ruling class in St. Paul. As is thinking about much different things, dark, dangerous, destructive things. It was especially disturbing to hear noted local, small business expert and bankrupt Minnesota House member. Andy Smith advocated for no limits on the number of pot shops in Rochester. His message is clear, let's do maximum damage. I implore you. As our last defense to exercise common sense and impose the maximum moratorium on pot shops. In Rochester.
Thank you. All right, I have Adam Busby joining virtually, please unmute yourself. Mr. Busby, you want to speak on item G1?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, go ahead when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Okay, I went, I'm not going to bore you all with the rest. I, can you hear me okay? Okay, because I agree with the first speaker, I believe her name was Ms. Ms. Schroeder. I speak as a Baptist pastor's son and a former youth pastor. And I, I studied, I went to 12 years of, of Christian school. I am pro cannabis and I became that way when my father came down with Alzheimer's. I would also, also ask the council to back their date off. Until it can be revisited maybe in 2024. I think it's a great. For local business that want to jump into selling cannabis. And I just think it's a good idea for locals and to keep the large. Producers out of Rochester and give a little bit more for the, to the small guy. But I'm pro, pro cannabis and I think we're moving in the right direction. That's all I have for this evening. And thank you very much, City Council. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Busby. Moving on to, to Ray Hicks. Please introduce yourself, you have five minutes.
I'm Ray Hicks, I'm from Ward 6. Molly, I'm glad to see you here tonight. The proposed ordinance, we already know sets a date, prohibits new businesses before 2025. Or that's what we're proposing, you know? It allows time for us to plan the best path considering the well-being of our community. I commend those who won't allow a new cannabis business here any earlier. Even this delay, which helps some, will not be sufficient for the well-being of our city. Especially that of our youth, our young adults and vulnerable residents. People we expect you and our local government to guard and protect. This, this is a picture of my family 21 years ago. Jay and Kyle were three and a half and two and a half at that time. They were special needs babies that we adopted from Korea. Kyle had cleft lip and palate and heart condition. Jay turned out to have very severe mental health affliction. And the other side is a picture of the grave marker of Jay, my oldest son. Cannabis played a significant role in his death. Our son suffered with mental health challenges that worsened as he grew. His struggles worsened. They got harder in middle school. By high school, he was using marijuana. His mental health episodes got dramatically worse then and his academic performance slid sharply. Jay was suffering from borderline personality disorder. That's one of the worst mental health disorders a person can have. Reputable studies such as from CDC and Mayo Clinic. Found marijuana adversely affects brain development of children, teens and young adults well into their twenties. They also found causative and aggravating connections of cannabis to mental health problems. It is common for BPT people or BPD to self-medicate in their attempt to cope. Our son used a variety of cannabis products to do that. Effects on him were devastating. They did not help him. That led him to try a variety of other narcotics. On June 3rd, 2019, one laced with fentanyl took his life. He was one of multiple such emergency calls that night in our city. Despite contrary claims, marijuana is not safe for human consumption. It can relieve some health condition symptoms. It is not a cure though, and it worsens many conditions dramatically. It damages brains, especially among our younger people. It greatly increases the chance people will turn to more dangerous narcotics. The more available cannabis becomes, more people in our community will go down this damaging deadly path. It will lead to more grief like my family lives with. More mental and physical damage of our residents, more premature deaths. The new Minnesota statute seemingly forces us down this path. It is a dangerously bad statute. It is also illegal, conflicting with federal law, which recognizes the danger and prohibits recreational use of cannabis. When something is this bad, we have a duty to push back on it. Not doing so makes us complicit in all the damage it will bring. Other states going down this path, they're not faring well. Before we ever implement this, it should be challenged in federal court to the full extent it can be. The ANC Drug Coalition or Foundation intends to file a suit to do that. I ask you to look into this and similar legal action and to stand up to stop this. In closing, in February this year, I testified in both Minnesota Senate and House hearings on this legislation. Parents of four other children who were damaged by cannabis and died of fentanyl poisoning also testified. All of our children died between ages 20 and 24. Jay was 21. Sadly, the members of the majority party did not heed our warnings and pushed this legislation through.
Mr. Hicks, your time is over.
Okay, one of them even stood before you and advocated for this. For the sake of our city, I hope you will have the moral fortitude to stand up against this. You do have a choice and the people's well-being is worth the effort and cost to fight this.
Thank you for your time tonight. I just want to remind everyone that it is not the state legislation that is up for discussion. It is how we are required to implement it locally, but I appreciate all your comments. Molly McGinnis.
Mayor, council resident, council members. My name is Molly, I'm from Rochester, I was born here, raised here. My family has been in a small business, serving Rochester for the past 45 years. We're not here to talk about my parents' business, we're here to talk about another newly legalized industry. The state of Minnesota has made a decision to legalize marijuana. That's done, that's not what we're here to discuss, we're here to debate. We're not here to debate that, but we're here to focus on the steps our community can take to transition this plant from illegal to legal markets. As a community member who would like to serve as a cultivator, I ask you to allow the cultivation, processing, manufacturing and retail sales of cannabis. To have a start date reflecting of what the state deems appropriate to begin issuing licenses, not the maximum allowed under the law. By delaying cannabis business startups in Rochester, you are forcing our community members to establish their businesses outside of Rochester and to shop outside of Rochester. Which will economically hurt the newly formed small cannabis businesses in our community. So just to reiterate, I want to wish you, I want to, I wish to, I wish to ask you to follow any state guidelines regarding cannabis start dates. And not delay any dates for the city of Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, John, John or Joan. Thank you. Alright, John, John or Joan Robinson? Yeah, please come on up. Go ahead, introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
My name is John Robinson. I, uh, ran for the House Representatives this last cycle, uh, against Andy Smith. And during that time, uh, law enforcement did make contact with me through their union, specifically with concerns with regard to cannabis. The main concern that they had is they did not have a way of determining a level at a particular time to determine if the person was intoxicated. In Colorado, they have seen since cannabis was legalized, an increase of a hundred twenty percent DOIs. And those DOIs specifically were, uh, that were in accidents. So not DUI being pulled aside, but where there was an accident associated with driving under the influence. There, there was been a hundred twenty percent increase. Most of that increase has been associated with cannabis. Unfortunately, there's some other things that have been increasing as well. That came with the cannabis. There are questions concerning safety and how to engage in safely dealing with. Uh, new issues associated with the cannabis. Uh, I think that it would be reasonable to reach out to, uh, our public safety. And make sure that they've had the opportunity to reach out to the state to implement policies. So that as we go forward, if that is the direction that we are going to have to go, we can do so as safely as physically possible. Uh, if it turns out that there is no safe way of forwarding. Uh, explicitly under the Minnesota, uh, Constitution as well as the US Constitution, state government. And federal government are both responsible for the safety of the people. And that goes beyond statute. There's a problem there. With that said, I would like to try to work with, and I think we as a city should try to work with, but in a safe way. And so I'm speaking for this. Slow this down a little bit. Think about this carefully.
Thank you. Alright, Peter Jack. Is there a Peter? Okay, come on up. And I don't see anyone else online, clerk. Am I missing somebody? Okay. Please introduce yourself and then you have five minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Jada. Um, I was born in Florida, but we moved up here. Uh, when I was two years old, so we've been living here about twenty-six years, my family and I. Um, my fiance and I currently live in the southeast side of town and I'm here representing her. Our business, Cana Cribs LLC, my friend Stacy, and anybody who feels the same way about cannabis as we do. So we are excited for these new opportunities that this bill will bring us, um, as far as. Things that the city will see. Um, so there will be a new class of jobs in the city. Um, in around the city, so new agriculture, um, processors, so lab jobs, um, extractors. Other purification jobs, retailers, of course, dispensaries, um. And as well as normal jobs, so things like HR assistants, uh, managers, retailers working directly at the desk. Uh, there will be a lot of local development due to this bill, so revitalizing buildings that are maybe old and decrepit need some. Um, breath sent into them. Um, there will be new buildings built, of course, for processing, for growing. There will be new farms. There will be new people starting farms as well. Um, there will be small business traffic. So Rochester, as somebody mentioned, is the third biggest city in Minnesota. I'm sure somebody here is going to make a really cool lab or a really cool dispensary that will drive traffic to the city specifically for that reason. That's supporting businesses. Um, they're going to have to eat somewhere, of course, and that's supporting small businesses as well. Um, there will be a new demographic of business owners. So my mother has owned a beauty supply store and a hair salon in Rochester here since two thousand and five. I've been a part of that helping her and so has my family. We've all learned a lot of things about business and now we are doing. What we can to also give breath Rochester in our own ways, being entrepreneurs. There are a lot of benefits to cannabis as well. So ideally drug time would go down because people aren't out purchasing cannabis and getting caught in cars and doing cannabis activities. Um, dealing and things of that sort. Um, so reducing the black market in general. Ideally, increasing consumer safety because they're not out and about doing bad things and they're in a safe space and getting the cannabis that they would like to consume. Reduce criminalization, so less people going to jail for cannabis offenses. Um, so reducing the loads on resources as well. Um, these can also be a. Alternative to opioids, as pain medications, um, also sleep aids for some people. I know personally, I sleep a lot better when I'm using. Um, tax revenue for the city, for the state as well. It's also scientific research, so cannabis becoming legal is only going to. Help figure out more ways that cannabis can help us as humans, help our animals and things of that sort live better lives. I just hope that we in Rochester here can follow the state guidelines. Um, and as they say, we can get to releasing bills in retail shops that. Rochester will allow us to kind of start at that same point that they're wanting to. Um, as I mentioned, my fiance and I, we have a business, Cana Cribs. If anybody has questions about. Laws or questions about what you can and can't do, or just wants to talk about cannabis in general or their concerns in the city, in Minnesota, in the world. About cannabis, we would love to have that discussion. Um, I'll have flyers here with my number on it that I would love to talk to anybody about. Just let me look at my list here and see if I have anything else that I'd like to know. Um, I, I guess I just want to say that most plants don't grow to fourteen feet tall. It's generally like. Five feet would be a really big plant is all I have to say. So, thank you everybody for allowing me to talk.
Alright, thank you. Uh, that is it for the list. I have, was there anybody else who would like to speak? Alright, Elaine, Ms. Niehoff, come up. I'll write you down, Mr. Lund. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. She spoke, you did speak last time, so we.
Yeah, but that's on the agenda, so I can speak more on the agenda.
No, because it's the same public hearing. You've already had your time to speak. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Mr. Lund.
Yeah, I, I wasn't gonna say anything again tonight, but.
Then I can speak next month again. I wanted to ask the representative of the Rochester Police Department, is there any procedure? For dealing with public intoxication with marijuana? Are there any strictures in place? What are the city ordinances at this point regarding public consumption of marijuana? How close can it be done to a school? School facility, Rochester Public Schools. Will all these issues be dealt with by the City Council? In terms of what amount you can carry? Sure, there's state guidelines, but your friend has a bag. Right? What about, uh, does this solve the, uh, black market of such goods? Even if you have state ordinances, aren't there going to be people who want to avoid sales tax of eight and something percent? On cannabis sales in Rochester? Uh, I already am surprised I live in a neighborhood that was once a very good neighborhood. Once upon a time and I bought my house sight unseen. I was told by the realtor that all neighbors, like all neighborhoods are equal. Yeah, that's the intended effect. Thank you for laughing. Cause I was hoodwinked. Cause when I took occupancy, there's shootouts within a hundred yards of my house. Cause unknown. There was a SWAT across the street. And then there was another SWAT across the street down the block a bit. And then the wonderful, the wonderful. Asian family with whom I shared vegetables from my garden decided one day to move out. Because it had just become too rough a neighborhood. So we lost diversity. People high in the alleyway, people, I'm driving to work at five thirty in the morning and there's some Cindy Lopper girl getting thrown out of a vehicle. Like, you know what? Let it go. Not related to her. Not my problem. There's enough fentanyl overdoses. I, I was speaking to Sheriff Torgerson. He says he knows. That nationwide sheriffs understand that marijuana is being laced with fentanyl. Who's gonna say that, okay, you can sell from a shop to person A, but then person A is gonna sell it to person B? Or chop it or cut it up? I don't know, guys. You're opening Pandora's box. We already have. Way too much chaos in, in Perfectville. And I live in a neighborhood where the Rochester Brahmins kids and grandkids. The Rochester Brahmins kids score their drugs in my neighborhood. I stopped a cocaine situation in my alley with a dude with Minnesota plates from Cook County. Your neighborhood may be perfect, your cul-de-sac, your gated community, your McMansion. Neighborhood out there, I can see those wonderful porticos, the tops of the, of the. Uh, the gilded windows facing the ten-foot-high wall. So somebody has this really nice window, but it faces a wall. I thought walls were bad. If you live in a protected community like that, where you don't understand, you haven't seen a drug deal go down while you're sitting on your toilet. Cause two cars pass up, the, the exchange goes through the window and then they drive away. If you don't have that in your neighborhood, you don't know what I'm talking about. Go out of your house after eight or nine PM, drive down Broadway, get to know Rochester. Once we legalize cannabis in this town, August first is gonna be weird. I'm already seeing people present with drug-related behaviors. I can smell it. Are, are we able to ask someone to leave a business if they're intoxicated publicly? What if they're in a restaurant? Uh, anyway, I'm at seventeen seconds. Please do all you can to rescind our city's involvement. With this bizarre Andy Smith scenario who is bankrupt and the information on him is unbelievable. Thank you.
Mr. Lund, alright, anybody else want to speak? Please come up. Introduce yourself, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening to all of you, Mayor Horton. Um, I grew up here since the age of three. Rebecca Springer. I've grown up here since the age of three. Have seen Rochester change dramatically since that time. I am now retired. And I, the age, I am of the age to have been retired a couple of years now. I also worked for Olmsted County as a child protection social worker. And I saw so many lives changed and destroyed by drugs. Those were the hardest cases for me to work and my colleagues to work. Because it was difficult to work with people whose brains were on drugs. Or let alone for them to really get back to parenting their children. So I am wondering what are the thoughtful ramifications? That our social services are going to have to contend with. Due to the fact that now it will not be less people doing drugs, it will be more. And I'm very concerned for the children. And I don't know how this ties into. The laws that we have here in the state of Minnesota for reunification with family, with parents. But all of that does need to be discussed. And if you haven't met with those individuals at the top ranks of that. That meeting does need to take place because there will be a ripple down effect. To our law enforcement, social services, uh, guardian ad litem, you name it. This is just not. Oh, let's go have new businesses, you know, start up in Rochester, Minnesota. I also watched the destruction of THC cannabis with my own nephew. And when he got hooked on cannabis, he kept going. He kept going and he tried harder and harder drugs. To the point that my sister and brother-in-law had to go down to Hennepin Avenue. Buy drugs from a dealer to put Nicholas, who at the time was about eighteen years of age. On a plane and get him out of Minnesota to a treatment program. Out in California where he stayed for over eighteen months to get his brain undone by drugs. Thankfully, his life is still intact and he was able to, you know, get things together. He is now married with a little girl. And they're expecting their second child, but he is one of very few. That came out of that program and was able to stay clean and sober and do life well. Please really take a look at the larger ramifications of this before Rochester would do what is being asked of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any final speakers? Alright, with that, we will close the public hearing and invite questions of my colleagues to. There isn't a rebuttal, but staff are welcome to provide a follow-up if you'd like. Because we are the applicant. Go ahead. Sure, that helps us a lot if you've just written down what concerns were brought up and can follow up. And then we'll just ask you additional questions.
Wonderful.
Go ahead.
Council members, Mayor Horton, Council President, colleagues, so. A, a lot of important things were said and concerns addressed. And I'm gonna stay in my lane for what I want to address. Uh, because many of the things that were brought up are absolutely things that you all as policymakers need to discuss. My interest at this moment in time, bringing forward this ordinance. Is to prepare a process and a plan to implement it. And to preserve the time allotted by the state to have that conversation. So I want to start there. Now, uh, specifically addressing the timeline issue. I understand there's a lot of dates that have kind of been thrown around by the state of when they're gonna do this and when they're gonna do that. There is no specific definitive timeline that has been released by the state. The only date that has been defined by the state is January first, twenty twenty-five. I personally, as a process expert, am not in a fan of guessing another date. If another date does become. Obvious, we can come back and talk about it. We don't have any other vehicle than ordinance to make. Use of this allotted time for, for collaboration. Uh, we, it can only be brought by, forward by ordinance or not at all. And so that's the process that we're utilizing. If we want to change it at a later date, then that will also then be brought forward as an ordinance to, as a change. And, you know, we're gonna be. What, I mean, this is gonna be an everyday thing now until now till forever. I mean, we're gonna be. Working on the ordinance until we can get it together and get it passed. We're gonna be utilizing the resources that are. The state has committed to offering to the cities. To help, and that's another reason that we're wanting to do this ordinance. They codified it in the law, their commitment to help cities form their regulations and practices. And we want to be able to take advantage of those resources. So a couple of other just quick points. Well, I don't wanna knock this over. Certainly, uh, I definitely want to just briefly touch on the idea of smoke and smoking and smoke all over the place. Um, we already have smoking regulations in the city. Doesn't mean we can't pass more, be more specific. That's up to you all to have that conversation. But currently, smoking, the way it's defined in our ordinance already includes. Plant products. It doesn't just say tobacco or cigarettes or cigars. It includes vaping, it includes e-cigarettes, it includes any kind of lit plant, period. And the, uh, public spaces where, in which those kinds of tobacco included cannot be smoked. Are already well-defined. That includes down by the riverside, it includes the entire medical district of all of Second Street. From Center Street, so I'm not sure what the southern border is. Um, includes bus shelters, it includes the library, it includes a long list of public spaces. Where people cannot smoke cigarettes or anything else. So just so you all know. No, it is not just going to suddenly be a free-for-all. We, we have ordinance in place already. And whether you want to do anything with that is up to you. Um, just want to make that clear.
We can.
I think that's all I'm gonna, that's all I'm gonna say for now, cause that, I think that addresses what's currently in front of us, so. But we're happy to take questions.
Do follow-up questions whether or not you have the answer for them or just can give them on your radar for us to do start work on this. I have a couple, but we can start with Councilmember Kirkpatrick and then.
Thank you. I have an agricultural zoning question. Which Mr. Yetzer know I. Ask about this all the time. So, is the cultivation propagation or, um. Agricultural practice of growing marijuana, would that fit under agricultural zoning? Or does it fit under manufacturing or industrial? I know we've upzoned nearly all of our agricultural zoning to something else. So. Can we be cultivating according to our zoning? Map that we have right now, can we be cultivating marijuana?
Before Ryan answers that question. I wanna say first that even if our zoning does allow it. No cultivation business could open without a state license. This, if you think about how we understand liquor licensing, where we've got a lot of local control and it ends at the state. This works in the opposite direction. Most of the vetting and the work and the application process happens at the state level. And then it it ends with a performatory step at city level in a registration process. They do check in with us on zoning and and along the way in the application process. But even if we zone, however it's laid out in the law, they can't do anything without a license. Just wanna make that super clear. So, go on, go ahead, Ryan, if you've got.
I don't know that, I don't know that I have a definitive advance of that. Off the top of my head, my initial reaction would be that it would be appropriate in an agricultural zoning district. Um, which as you said, we have very little of in within the city limits.
I'm just trying to, I guess, um. Address or put out there some of the expressions that I've heard tonight. I I have a grower's license with the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, but it's not for cannabis, it's for, uh, perennials. So I'm just wondering if, um, I actually have a farm number as an urban farm farmer. So, the folks that have gotten up here tonight and have suggested, or even the Zoom. Um, uh, speaker that we had suggested, uh, cultivation. In about a year, twenty twenty-four. Is, would that fall under some sort of different category than what you're suggesting now? Or is it even possible? I mean, do we, do we shut that down now by saying it's an agricultural practice? We don't have any of that in the city limits, so folks, you don't have to worry about it, or where would this go? I'm just looking this direction.
I don't think we wanna go that deep, cause we don't know the answer in that, in that regard. But what I will say. Is the concern that I think you're picking up about people worrying about our prohibition. Extending past some period of the state spinning up sooner than we anticipate. My response to that is if that becomes readily apparent. And there is a definitive timeline, which there now is not. That we come back and say, hey. We should adjust the ordinance to meet up with what the state's doing. That's up to you then if you wanna change that. But I, as of the process person, am not recommending that we guess at this time. There is no date. They only, they have a website, they don't have a director, there's nothing happening yet. I mean, there's things happening, obviously, but there's no formal ramp-up of the O C M yet. Or a date at which that's gonna happen. So we're sticking to the date that's been defined, which is January first, twenty twenty-five. I mean, that's it. We wanna be specific and we wanna be accurate. And I feel like guessing just has us in and out of here, in and out of here, in and out of here over the next year. So when definitive things come to the surface, we'll address them. There aren't any right now.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. My question is for the clerk. And I wonder, uh, how certain we can be about our current ordinances. And the prohibition of its use in public places after August first recreationally. Uh, the Star Tribune today reports Duluth is, uh, passing a specific ordinance against that. Uh, and it also says earlier this month, after the legislation was signed into law. One of the Democratic legislators who sponsored the bill told news website MinPost. That smoking will be allowed anywhere that is not prohibited by the state's Clean Indoor Air Act. That means starting August first, Minnesotans can smoke in a park, on a sidewalk or outside a restaurant or bar. Unless their city passes an ordinance prohibiting it. And a little later on, it says the League of Minnesota Cities issued a memo memo today. Advising cities that we need to pass an ordinance, uh, to have an enforcement mechanism to prevent public cannabis use.
Again, it's already in our ordinance.
So.
Cannabis?
Land products.
Well, so that, I I understand the needle that you're threading here, so. First off, uh, I wanna be careful to not tread into enforcement territory, cause it's not my lane. If Michael or or somebody from R P G or City Attorney Spiller Craig wants to speak to that, they're welcome to do so. What I'll say is I'm not saying do or don't do that, or whether it's necessary, not necessary. I'm concerned with the process and what is currently happening. And we currently have language that applies. If you all want to go further. Like, we certainly have that conversation, that's not what this ordinance is for tonight. So, uh, I think you're asking a relevant question. I don't think I'm the right person to answer it, I think it's a discussion amongst you all.
So the item on the table is about retail sales, you're bringing up smoke-free spaces.
Really.
Exactly, the clerk brought it up and I'm responding to her.
Yeah, I brought it up just trying to let people know that brought up that concern that we have language and ordinance that applies. So our smoking prohibition language includes the word plant or any plant. So, just something to consider as far as language goes.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Keen?
Um, yeah, looking at the specific language which is in front of us, it does seem to make sense to the state who put together this law. Offered this sort of ability for us to control this. Um, a couple of specific questions though, are, are prohibiting the operation of any new cannabis business? Does that imply the ones that are already in place are licensed or not can continue to operate?
Well, I, I mean. Yes, I'm not implying it, I mean. Green Goods is the only business, they're a medical cannabis retailer that has a license from the Department of Health. Their licensure at some point will be subsumed by the Office of Cannabis Management. That is not what has happened right now. I don't, I thought it was important that we don't conflate all of that stuff. It's already laid out how that transition's gonna happen.
Okay, so that's where the new comes in.
Correct.
So then I do wanna understand this too then. Um, as far as, uh, the way the the hierarchy works. No one would come to the city of Rochester to do business before they have a license from the state of Minnesota.
That's correct.
Okay, so. Yeah, so I think what you're telling us is the way we're, the the language in front of us right now. Protects us from having any sort of rogue things going on that we didn't know how to control. But at some point, we will know that those things start happening, and if we wanted to act, then we could.
Correct.
Okay, I think I understand it better, thank you.
I have two questions. It was brought up, obviously, many of us have concerns about public safety and. Public health and, uh, social services connected to this. I just would like, love to hear you say out loud that part of the process is working with these partners. As we know more from the state about what the regulations will be. So our public safety, our police department will know.
Council president and council members and Mayor Norton. All of the relevant stakeholders will be involved in the process.
Okay.
We, uh, at least myself, from the process perspective. I really want to have some sort of framework to work with. Before we just go out and start having conversations. And the Office of Cannabis Management ha- is purported to, is going to provide some of those resources. And I think that's really important. I, I'm nervous about launching into these conversations without some guidelines.
Right.
But, I mean, I think it's, I mean, it's not, I think it just is important. That all of these considerations are gonna be heard.
Right.
But. We need time.
Absolutely, I just wanted to point out that the city is not operating in isolation, we work with our police department, of course, we will be.
That's why I'm trying to.
Mostly aligned.
Yes.
Okay, and then the other question is, I know you, uh, have the January first timeline. As you learn a little bit more, could we put in place a couple checkpoints? So, the development process includes council and sharing our feedback along the way. So it's not like we get to late twenty twenty-four and then we see it for the first time, but so we have a chance to be part of that process.
Council president, council members. Absolutely, of course, I don't, uh, think that I could offer up a timeline right now at this moment. But I'd be happy to bring that back to you, or even just. Develop it when I've got a little bit more detail and I've had an opportunity to talk with, obviously, administration, Michael and police. Other various people, and then give you something more concrete.
Perfect, thank you so much. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, then. You have a last question?
I I did, but if some.
He wants to make a motion, so go ahead.
He wants to make a motion, okay. I guess my question was kind of coming off of, um, Mr. Walls. And you did say, um, Clerk Geisler, that we have an ordinance in place already for smoking, which I understand. But, and and then you talked about enforcement, but I'm really curious if we have adequate enforcement capacity. I mean, an ordinance is only as good, a policy is as only, as good as its enforcement. You don't write policies that you can't enforce, at least we probably shouldn't be. I I, how are, how are we going to enforce this?
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, council president, I don't think that I'm qualified to answer that question frankly.
But we'll be part of the process.
Absolutely, of course, that conversation is already occurring, so.
All right, well, Councilmember Dennis, a question?
I think it's a clarifying question, so I I just wanna, so every city is doing this. What we're doing is is figuring out what timeframe and and, um. Like exactly what we're going through, so if we pass time of, you know, January first, two thousand twenty-five. Could like a neighboring small town like Byron, Stewartville, um, pass one for next month? I mean, is, is, I guess I'm just curious on, is it per city, I just clarifying across the state?
So, yeah, I think I know what you're asking. Uh, so, yeah, each individual organized municipality, under the local control section of the new law. Has some ability to take some action, this is one of those actions. Any organized municipality in the state could take this action, or anything in between. So, that that's been done in some other cities. But there's no, uh, real prescription other than this January first, twenty twenty-five timeframe, so.
So, so I'm, yeah, so we could pass it for January twenty, you know, for that date. And then neighboring cities could change the date and it could, I guess, I see what happens with like fireworks, right? You know, people go to neighboring cities, neighboring states to purchase fireworks, you know, um, that are different regulations and such. I so just worry about us passing a very strict, um, regulation here, uh, or far out, and then having businesses just, uh, you know.
So let me, just out of the detail to then, is that I I. I'll tie it together with an earlier point, which is. Should we find out definitively that the Office of Cannabis Management is going to formally spin up earlier? And if we're gonna wanna come back to you all and talk about that. So, let's say, uh, whatever, any neighboring community passed a similar. Ordinance, but with a shorter timeframe, if the state wasn't ready to start issuing licenses, it wouldn't matter. Uh, we can't do anything until the state. They have to issue before we can register, has to go in that order, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I'll make a motion, um, approving our, uh, proven proposed ordinance. Proven or proposed ordinance prohibiting the operation of new cannabis businesses within the city before January first, twenty twenty-five. And directing the city attorney to repair an ordinance for the first reading on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Second.
Right, Councilmember Palmer?
I think that it's, um, as clear as that we can do it right now.
Other discussion, Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I again, I just wanna make a point, well, following up on Councilmember Dennis's questions. I mean, somebody else could not pass this and and be kind of viewed as much more liberal and more open to these businesses. But conceptually, the way the state set this up, they really. They can't start doing anything, um, and we're, and what we're doing right now is just protecting ourselves in case. Um, some kind of rogue thing started that we're not, we can't anticipate. I think it's just good, good government to have the protections in place. But I think it's important side discussion we had here that as this office starts getting put together, I think we should be watching it. Because I think there is a thing here that this could be considered, um, anti-business to some small business opportunities. If Rochester came out in a much, um, more, uh, prescriptive against, uh, these businesses. And that's what I'd be worried about, but I don't see that harm right now.
I think that is an important point, Councilmember Keen, I would just say as a public health professional and mother, of course, I want us to be very, very thoughtful in how we're. Doing this and and following guidance by, from the state. So thank you Clerk Geisler for being thoughtful about the process along with us and engaging partners and making sure we are. Coming up with the best ordinance we can, uh, given the the guidance from the state. Other comments, Councilmember Wall?
Yeah, I will, uh, support the ordinance since it gives us, uh, more time. Uh, I share, uh, the feelings of many of the speakers tonight and have grave concerns about public safety and want to ensure that. Uh, questions that were well-articulated by our own Olmsted, uh, County Sheriff. Uh, both at the legislature and across the state, and deep concerns for the safety of our children. So, anything that we can do to, uh, ensure those two pieces of safety are critical for our, for our city.
All right, Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in, uh, I agree with Mr. Keen. Um, we definitely don't wanna squash business, we don't wanna be too prescriptive. But if the state doesn't issue licenses until January first, twenty twenty-five. I I I agree, we're not, we're not attempting to squash a business, we're just attempting to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row from a legal and. Uh, ordinance and, uh, enforcement perspective. And as a father of of four, um, whose son walks home through the alleyway. Of a holiday station or other businesses, um, where, you know, there's some, there's some. Dodgy stuff going on and it'll be interesting to see how this will play out. I don't really wanna say more than that, but, uh, it'll be an interesting year and a half to see how this plays out.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, then Dennis?
I don't know if I should say this or not, but master gardeners have gotten a lot of questions on how to grow cannabis. You're, um, we're trying to sort through that. Of course, this ordinance doesn't prohibit folks from having twenty pounds worth, or the nineteen seventies phrase, grow your own. So I don't, um. I don't know how this is gonna play out, like all of us have talked about. Um, I'm concerned about the paraphernalia that's gonna be coming up, um, for sale in more places throughout our city. Um, there's a gas station in my ward where. People smoke fentanyl freely and the staff has to go in and clear the bathroom out. So. Having this ordinance. Limiting the operation until January first, twenty twenty-five of new businesses. Um, I, I don't see as, um. A really big deal. I'm, I'm kinda concerned that it's gonna do nothing. When I see the amount of overdoses that are happening, when I hear from. Folks in my ward, business owners in my ward that have no capability to enforce drug use. Or, um, overdoses that happen on premise and that kind of thing. So my, my concern is, um. The morals of how drugs are used and how they're passed along. And how they are shared between people and, uh, the effects on. Um, our growing population, that's, that's really what my concern is. That's, that's really what my concern is all about.
Councilmember Dennis?
All right. Thanks. Thank you. So I, I came very open to this conversation. I've heard from residents who reach out about the, the incredible crisis we have with alcohol and how we have alcohol at center of a lot of festivities and how harmful other things are that are legal. I, I think we have to tread really lightly when it comes to this incredible paradigm shifting new thing that's happening in our, in our state. I personally don't have an experience at all with cannabis. I haven't even smoked a cigarette. I probably would, probably would choke. But when it comes to things like edibles and other things that, I mean, people who don't have experience or who make schools and we, I think we should even look at having a public awareness campaign, see if the city, I know we do these public awareness commercials with RPU and things maybe seen if we can start when we're actually working on making a timeline for regulations and these questions are so important enforcement and driving. And, and, you know, all of this, when we're looking at the important laws, policies that are going along with this legislation, I, I really think just kind of cannabis, marijuana, edibles, 101, kind of a thing for the city to do as well, might be very beneficial for people who, you know, are learning from their friends or learning from different varieties of sources that, that this can be very dangerous, that it could just these, this heart wrenching story about being laced with other drugs. I mean, I can't even fathom what would happen, you know, like if, I can't even fathom some of the things that, that might happen with people just being ignorant on, on cannabis. So maybe the speaker who spoke about his business, if he or others, other people who have, have a lot of knowledge could work together with partners and different entities here in town to get not just policy, but also education out during this timeframe as well. Thank you.
Discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Yep, we will take a break until five to nine, so eight fifty-five. All right, we are moving on to public hearing G2, which is the final plat number CD 2023 008 plat to be known as Alpha Fourth Division. And Desmond McGeal is here in person to introduce the item. Go ahead, Mr. McGeal.
Thank you, President Carlson, Mayor Norton, members of council. Good evening. My name is Desmond McGeal. I'm with Community Development Department. This site is just shy of about 16 acres. It's located on the east side of 50th Avenue Northwest and the north and south sides of Regency Pines Place Northwest. The applicant is proposing to create or, or at least recognize two existing lots to facilitate townhome style development. There's no right of way proposed with this plat. The applicant currently has a site development plan in process and in review by staff for the development of 134 townhouse units. The primary purpose of this plan is to just document location of the public utilities and the easements, the access easements over the two lots and also to place both parcels in the subdivision underneath the same plat. So that concludes my presentation. I believe the applicant is online. If you have any questions for him as well.
Sure. Let me see. Mr. Welch, please go ahead and introduce yourself and you have 10 minutes.
Sure. Mark Welch with G Keep Engineering, representing the applicant. And I'm here just to answer any questions. We have no concerns with the five conditions of approval. So.
All right, we'll get back to you if there are.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll open the public hearing for item G2. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? If you are joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Last call, seeing no one, we will close the public here unless you are about to get up. No? Okay. All right. We'll close the public hearing and invite any questions from my colleagues? Or a motion?
Make a motion to approve CD 2023 dash 008 plat, known to be as Alpha Fourth subdivision with the five conditions. Second.
Councilmember Palmer?
I'm nothing further.
Other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item G3, which is the bill, the appeal CD 2023 001 AP by Reagan Outdoor Advertising. And I will actually ask my staff to introduce the item before the applicant steps up. So we have Alison Sosa or Mr. Yetzer who's speaking.
I am.
Go ahead.
Councilperson Carlson, I have a couple of slides just to introduce this item. Before us tonight is an appeal for a billboard variance CD 2023 002 VAR. So before we get started, we wanted to briefly cover what a variance is. And a reminder that a variance is a request to vary from the strict rules of the zoning ordinance, in this case, the Unified Development Code. A city may grant a variance if enforcement of the zoning ordinance provision would cause the landowner practical difficulties. And that's the, the term that I'm going to hit on several times throughout my brief presentation. Practical difficulties is a legal standard that cities must apply when considering variances. The state statute practical difficulty standard is the basis for the findings in which the UDC variance findings are drafted from. There we go. Before we dig into the request itself, we thought it was important to briefly touch on the difference between a sign and a billboard. And so a sign is any object, device, display or part thereof situated outdoors or indoors that is displayed to attract the attention of the public. Again, the, the purpose of a business sign is to attract attention to the use on site, i.e. the McDonald's, the Quick Trip, et cetera. Whereas a billboard is a sign that directs attention to any person, product, event, service or other matter that is not related to or on the premise where the sign is located. And apart from the definition, there's a couple of key standards to note that quite show the difference quite clearly between a billboard and a sign. And so under the UDC standards, the maximum size of a freestanding sign is 64 feet. And in some zoning districts, it's as small as 12 feet, whereas a billboard, the size is 600 square feet, 10 to 50 times larger than what a business sign. The height of a billboard or the height of a freestanding sign is a maximum of six feet in some zoning districts and gets up to 20 feet in others. A billboard is 50 feet in height, again, two and a half to eight times taller than what a freestanding sign is allowed. And the lighting on a, on a business sign depends on the zoning districts. There are some zoning districts that don't allow lighting at all on signs and others that allow electronic message boards. Whereas as of the council meeting last week, billboards are allowed to be electronic message boards. So as for this application specifically, this is again, an appeal by Reagan Outdoor Advertising for, and the request is to decrease the required distance between a billboard and a place of worship. I will note that the site currently operates as a self-service storage facility. And the site is bound by a church on the north side, residential properties on the east side, and then a car dealership on the south side. Again, the proposal is. Again, the proposal is is to space the billboard approximately one hundred and sixty five feet from the place of worship. Which is a forty five percent percent reduction in the billboard spacing requirement. And the standard that we are talking about is that no billboard shall be located within three hundred feet of a place of worship. And again, the scope of this appeal is not. Again, the scope of this appeal is not to debate the billboard policy, but rather complete a factual review against the. Findings and and determine if you can support reducing the spacing requirement to forty five percent. As I mentioned at the beginning, the findings located in the U D C are based off of state statute requirements when it comes to variances. It's important for the council to review these findings in detail and make a decision based on these findings. Our team suggest, our team's suggested findings are located on page two hundred and three of the council packet. And these findings were unanimously supported by the zoning board of appeals. A lot of information about billboards has been presented to you folks over the last couple of months. But at the end of the day, our team believes that this is a rather simple review when when considering the findings in front of you. Particularly finding B, C, and E cannot be met, this pause, this is not a policy discussion, but rather a quasi judicial judicial review. For a request based on these findings. And lastly, those findings of B, C, and E. Simply state that the site currently operates in a reasonable manner, again, the site operates as a self-service storage facility, it has for some time. And it is, it clearly can operate in a reasonable manner. There is no practical difficulty or unique feature on this site. The lot is not too small, the lot does not include topography, the lot does not include items that otherwise make it unusable. And as for detriment to public health, finding E a forty five percent reduction in the distance to a place of worship. In our opinion, creates a slippery slope for future locational variances. That may look to required variances from distances of school, residential districts, or other billboards. Again, as as I previously mentioned. We have, since community development was created in two thousand and nineteen, had seven sign variances and all seven have been. Denied because of the the findings before you tonight, so with that, I will stand, pause and. Answer any questions following the public hearing, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Yetzer, all right, Mister Pearson, you're welcome to come up on behalf of Reagan. You have ten minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Chairperson, and council members, my name is Nelson Pearson and I am here on behalf of Reagan Outdoor Advertising. With me today is our owner, Bill Reagan Senior, and other members of our office. We at Reagan believe that variances should be an exception to zoning ordinances. And this is the very first time that Reagan Outdoor has ever been before the city council requesting a variance. The Reagans have helped out in the communities they serve by investing in and giving back in many ways. We have supported our local government's requests, the mayor's requests for messaging surrounding the warming shelters and masking, the Homestead County Sheriff Department's. Emergency weather warning information, as well as working with the city to promote changes to policies involving COVID nineteen, to name just a few ways that we help out. We hope to be a ready tool for any amber alerts, silver alerts, severe weather, or other public information that we can respond to within seconds or minutes instead of days or weeks. Your attachments from the Z B A reference just a few examples of our many contributions to nonprofit and community groups. That we have worked with for us, for our staff, this type of work is the most fulfilling. The relocation of Park Place Motor Cars onto a previously vacant lot. Required us to remove our billboard at the site and we wish to relocate it just seventy five feet north at classic storage. We did not want to move closer to a place of worship, but we are grateful that Homestead Church does not oppose our billboard. To avoid this spacing variance required for places of worship, we had proposed a single sided board to be oriented away from any place of worship. There are no places of worship that will be exposed to messaging or light from our proposed billboard. Unfortunately, city staff did not read the ordinance the same way and required our application for a variance. The Z B A did not grant our variance, which brings us here today, and we request that you would overrule the denial and grant us a variance with conditions. We have reviewed the staff report with our team, including our in-house legal team. And our concerns with staff report are as follows. Under criterion B, that was previously on the board, staff's interpretation of the criteria is, in our opinion, incorrect. It is not whether staff thinks the use is reasonable. That interpretation would provide staff with unchecked authority to dictate how individuals can use their property. It would be akin to saying, you, the landowner, want to put a building on your property, but you can't because that area could reasonably be used as a parking lot. What if this was a vacant lot? Then would a billboard be allowed to be put up? Placing a billboard at a storage facility is reasonable and frankly, common. The code reads, the applicant proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, but there are practical difficulties in achieving that proposed use. The plain reading of this clearly means that the analysis is whether our proposed use is reasonable. Therefore, the analysis under criterion B should be whether placing a billboard in this type of mixed use district is is a reasonable use, which it is according to the code. Then you move to whether there are practical difficulties in using this property in this reasonable manner. Which, while still complying with the U D C at the same time. In our case, our reasonable use is not able to be achieved because of the proximity to a church. Then you move on to criterion C. Whether the practical difficulties have been created by the landowner and are solely economic. Practical difficulties, zoning ordinance restrictions significantly limit where billboards can be placed. There was a bill aboard seventy five feet away. That location was not conforming due to the location of the residential district. An issue with ability to have a billboard at our site only arose when the church moved into a building that was previously a business, a Taekwondo studio. In two thousand and nineteen, that was who the tenant was when we were visiting the site. Staff statement that practical difficulties in using property are only economic because the landowner wants to generate more revenue is an oversimplification. That interpretation would produce a standard by which any revenue generating business that needed a variance to operate would be automatically denied. Criterion E, it will not alter the essential character of this neighborhood. This is a mixed use district right on highway fifty two, I used to work at one of the car dealerships. It is meant for businesses, if you drive down the road, it's car repair shop, car dealership, car dealership, storage facility, then a church. There was a billboard here for thirty plus years, not allowing that billboard to be replaced is what would alter the char- character of the neighborhood. The church has a tall, on-premise digital sign. How are billboards not consistent with the character of this area? Finally, criterion K, which. City staff offers no reasonable or appropriate conditions that could be imposed that would allow for the purpose of the regulation to be realized. We have suggested on, we have suggestions of conditions that we are happy to comply with and hope that those can be offered up this evening. First, staff has made an inference in the zoning board of appeals meeting that we were not using a sign credit because this is a conforming location. We are committed to using a sign credit in order to place this sign and we are happy to allow that condition. Second, we are committed to using neighborhood friendly technology. That will shield areas around the structure from any digital digital light. Specifically that we will use light mitigation technology that will limit visibility of the face to thirty degrees. Of the center oriented toward highway fifty two as outlined in the July fourteenth, twenty twenty three Dectronics light study included in your folder. I hope you noticed our panels out in the hallway. Finally, we are committed to only having one face of this billboard facing. Towards facing, we are committed to having only one face of this billboard facing away from the place of worship. As long as the adjacent property to the north remains a place of worship. All of these conditions are allowed to be placed on the variance in accordance with criterion K. Section sixty five hundred thirty F two A three also allows the appealing body to add conditions onto variance applications by stating. Following the close, close of the appellate public hearing, the reviewing body may affirm, reverse, or modify in whole or in part. The determination requirement or decision that is under review. Staff makes a new argument that was not brought up at Z B A that granting this variance may create a bad precedent or a slippery slope. We would argue that if you can't grant a variance in this situation, then there really isn't a bona fide variance process. This corridor is one of the highest traveled in the region. If a billboard cannot be located along frontage within seventy five. Feet of a previous site on one of the highest traveled roads, where are billboards supposed to go? The fact that Homestead Church settled their site in two thousand and twenty one indicated that they are not concerned. About being exposed to the advertising that might be inconsistent with their beliefs, while there was a billboard oriented in their direction. A billboard is suited for this neighborhood and is not injurious, given the surrounding commercial mix of businesses signage, including the church's own digital display. The city's spacing requirement is actually a restriction on allowing places of worship from having billboards on their properties. Which seems discriminatory from both a first amendment approach and the property rights of places of worship. As noted in your packet, we have a place of worship that currently has two structures on their property. And they have, and they note they have had no issues with these structures. When looking at the variance process, you have to look at it from the perspective of allowing landowners to use their land in a manner. They want while recognizing that the city has an interest in maintaining some sort of cohesive planning and in protecting certain businesses and individuals. As a result, zoning and use restrictions are allowed, but never intended to allow the local government to completely dictate how land is to be used. Here, staff seeks to dictate how a landowner can use his land based only upon the proximity of his intended use to a protected party. The church. However, the protected party is not in opposition to having a sign there and. You have the ability to impose restrictions on the desired use that allow the purpose of the regulation to be realized. To put it simply, please do not restrict our landowner's right to use his property how he wants to. Based upon perceived need to protect a party that has indicated that it doesn't need protecting. We hope you can turn the zoning board of appeals denial, I'm sorry. We hope you can overturn the zoning board of appeals denial and grant our application for this variance with conditions today.
Thank you. All right, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak on this topic? If you're joining virtually, use the raise hand or press or raise hand function or press star nine. Last call, we'll close the public hearing and invite questions from my colleagues of staff or the Reagan team. Councilmember Bransford?
So out of curiosity, just following up with the three conditions that Reagan. Was suggesting, I just want to be clear that that is possible for us to create three conditions as outlined by Reagan as a part of this process.
Correct, if you're gonna approve the overturning of the denial, we will need new, we would need findings that clearly outline how you're coming to that conclusion, correct? I would.
Go ahead.
Go.
Let Mister Yetzer go ahead and then we will go over to Mister.
There's just a couple of things that I want to say following the public hearing. There were several notions made during Mister Pearson's. Presentation that states something along the lines of the property owner's right to a billboard and I just. Want to make sure the council understands there, the property owner has no legal right to a billboard, that is what zoning is intended for, and so this. Sort of fear mongering that you're doing something, taking a right away is simply untrue. Again, a lot of information is being thrown at you about billboards that simply isn't relevant to the discussion tonight, whether or not the church likes the billboard, whether or not there was a billboard seventy five feet away, whether or not. There's a car dealership next to another car dealership, frankly, none of that is relevant to the findings put before you tonight. And the key here is that the site being used in a reasonable manner, I'm not standing here saying that putting a billboard on a on a. Storage facility is not reasonable, however, what what you're, what you need to find tonight is that. Is is whether or not the site can be used in a reasonable manner while still meeting your zoning ordinance. And the reality is the site can be used in a reasonable manner while still meeting your zoning ordinance because it is already doing that. So those are the points of clarification I wanted to provide and happy to address any other questions.
Sure, Councilmember Keen?
I I just had a couple of questions from the discussion, I had not seen anything about sign credits before it came up in the discussion, can you react to that?
Yep, for our ordinance, they will be required to utilize a sign credit to put this billboard up. Which I have no doubt that they will do, they have a sign credit and another one that they would be eligible to receive. If they choose, but there's no question they would need a sign credit to put this billboard up.
Okay, I, and then I guess this question is for you guys too, but the if if a variance is granted, is granted to the property, is that correct?
Correct, it sticks on that piece of property.
Then why would you need a credit to put up a sign, wouldn't it then be? And conforming?
That piece of the code would now be conforming, but the code still says to put up a new billboard, you must have a sign credit. Regardless of where you are in the city, so unless you were giving, also giving them a variance saying they didn't need a sign credit, they would need to conform with the rest of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I think I understand. And again, I, this isn't, I'm still trying to think through the whole instruction on quasi judicial. What you're saying, and this really isn't a judgment of this is. Okay or not, okay, this is applying the criteria and if if. In a quasi judicial way and then finding that you can grant it, but then you have to tie it to one of those conditions. That you're granting it for K or for C or for E.
Well, you've got to meet all of the findings and what our suggestion is those three findings that we. Mentioned are the ones that we feel cannot be met with this request. So. Again, the question is whether or not you believe the site can be used in a in a reasonable manner. The question is not whether or not you believe. Billboard should be three hundred feet away from churches, that's not necessarily what we're discussing tonight, that would be a policy discussion on whether or not. You believe billboard should be separated from churches, that's frankly not what we're doing though, what we're doing is reviewing the findings and making. Fine, or reviewing the criteria and making findings based on that criteria.
Could you put those back up so that I can see?
Yes. I I guess I'm trying to come to grips with your guidance there, Ryan, because I'm. I I think what we have to come to grips with is agreement with staff's understanding of the criteria. Or do I?
No, you can come up with your own criteria, what we're.
Not criteria.
Or not criteria, findings, correct?
All right. Go go ahead, I'm sorry you were gonna use.
I was just gonna say, again, similar to Councilmember Bransford's question, you you guys can certainly come up with. Different criteria than us or the Z B A have have come up with. But those are the ones that we have have are not able to find in favor to grant the variance.
And again, the guy, the the. The variant need, the variance in order to be granted needs to clear all of the criteria. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
I'm a little confused on all this, so bear with me on this. If four of us think that there's that that meets the criteria, then it meets the criteria, correct?
Correct.
That's all we have to do is have four people agree to that, right? So. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So this may be with the, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think with the additional understanding that there needs to be factual findings in support of that conclusion.
We could then ask the staff to come back with those that would support us.
Well, I'll defer to staff on.
Well, they're shaking their head, yes.
We, yes, but we would appreciate guidance on how you're coming to that conclusion because we provided our professional opinion when we put the staff report together.
Okay. If there wasn't a church there, we wouldn't be here, they'd have the.
Correct.
Okay. Bear with me on this.
But I will just note that if there wasn't a church there, the billboard that they took down on the Park Place Motor Site would not have received a sign credit.
Okay, that's a whole different issue. So, okay, that's.
So, okay, that's a different issue for me. So.
I'm being told that might not be true. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. It's, it's a church today. It's to the church. If it's not a church for a week and we issue the permit, then it goes away.
I, I don't know how that would work logistically, but yeah, if the church is not there, then this isn't an issue. Correct?
Okay. Well, this is gonna sound odd, but my, my grandfather owned the house nineteen fifty five just north of, of the Taquando place when that was built. He wasn't a fan of that. It was Highway fifty two. He kind of understood that. So it wasn't a church for a long period of time. And I'm having trouble with sixty feet in, in, in moving it to sixty feet down the road. I mean, it's Highway fifty two. I drive by it four times a day. It's a busy road. It seems like the one little hiccup here is that it's too close to a church and the church doesn't have an opinion whether or not it's bad. They're not arguing about it. If the church was saying, I don't want a billboard there, we, I don't believe the billboard company would be in front of us. So that, that, that's where my thought process is and I'm having trouble. You know, with a variance and saying, well, we're not going to grant any variances. We haven't done seven, so we're not gonna do anymore. And then you start with, it's a slippery slope and in my opinion, it's not because everything stands on its own. Just because somebody else had done something doesn't mean I get to do it. It, you know, unless it's on Highway fifty two and sixty feet away and kind of meets that. That's just my, my thought process.
Sure. What concerns me about that is the, the notion that, well, if the neighbor doesn't care, then it's okay because that, that feels like a slippery slope and and, and an argument that will come up and say, well, in July, the neighbor didn't care and that they were allowed to do that. I want that same treatment. That's what, that's what worries us. And again, our team didn't draft this, right? We didn't come up with the rule of three hundred feet. We didn't create the findings state statute did. This is our professional review of the rule and the findings and the conclusion that we've come to.
But as the city council, four of us decide, then we can
Yep.
Grant the variance and then ask you to come back with a.
Correct.
Okay.
But he's saying that he would like us to point out what those findings would be.
Wow. Okay.
Right. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Both Mr. Palmer and you, Mr. Yetzer, said that you've denied variances seven times prior. Were any of those seven times for billboards that had to be taken down because of a change of business? So is this a, is this a different scenario?
They were all sign related, but this is our first one for a billboard. Correct?
So they were signs before, not billboards before. And they weren't. They weren't at a location where a sign needed to be removed. Because the business was expanding and a sign couldn't go back up there. So the seven prior to this are very different than this particular situation?
All, they're all slightly different from one another. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, okay, so another question is can we put in place tonight? No more variances allowed on billboards except by ordinance vote in the future?
No.
And the, and the ordinance vote is a seven zero vote, right?
We can't do that. State statute allows the variances. The, the rules of a, of a variance come from state statute.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
Is the proposed billboard approximately the same size as the one that came down?
Yeah, I mean typically billboards are built to the maximum size. So yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keen, then Bransford.
No, my, mine wasn't a question, so I, I can't do it now.
So just to be clear about the difference between a billboard and a sign, if this were a sign lighted so that did not shine in the church, would this, would this variance be okay? Is it that it's a billboard that makes this?
Right, so again.
Raising?
Right. So again, the distinction is if it were a sign, a business sign, let's be clear, because a billboard and a, and a business sign are, are both a sign. So if this were a business sign, the difference is they can only advertise that business. So in that case, they could, and as I showed previously, it would be a fraction of the size. So they could only advertise that storage facility. Whereas a billboard, once a billboard is put up, second amendment right kicks in and we have no control over what that billboard, what sort of advertising that billboard holds, which is likely the reason why churches are given the three hundred foot protection in the first place is to protect them from not being able to control the message that goes on that billboard. So there is no, and there is no legal way for us to control that.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Palmer.
There's a huge difference between a sign and a billboard. And so the variances, you've not had any billboard variances. Correct. I was under the impression that all seven were billboard variances. And so that's a clarification. So you're up the road and there's a McDonald's on Fifty Fifth Street. And that sign is higher than twenty feet.
Those are the UDC standards. That's, that McDonald's sign was built under the LDM.
And what would have been the LDM requirement for McDonald's?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Obviously, obviously taller, it's the taller. Okay.
Councilmember, I'm gonna let Councilmember Dennis go, then Kirkpatrick.
All right. Okay, just to clarify. So, well, I'm a huge supporter of the constitution. So freedom of speech and what happens if there is something that's incredibly offensive but on a sign? Isn't there any recourse? Like if someone like profanity, is there, there's, is there no rate? I'm just curious for citywide. Like can't residents come and complain that there's something that's, I don't know. Discrimination discriminatory or I.
We get, we get those types of questions frequently. Frankly, you're, you're headed into a rabbit hole here of some, of some pretty legal questions. There is some state or not state Supreme Court decisions that support regulating if there is explicit language, but in terms of the message that itself, if it's not using explicit words, you cannot control it.
Do you want? Well, I'm, I'm just, do you want Reagan to speak in what, how they regulate that? Because they can respond to this question right now.
Well, I guess I, I've, I've worked with Reagan, Reagan's business and I can fathom what I've heard that that would be an issue. I'm just thinking in general, if, I mean, I mean, not speaking for the specific issue, but I'm just curious if residents come in the future, if they see something that was nudity or, I know something that was very offensive, they really, their hands, the hands are tied and the city cannot enforce except obviously threats or things that would be exceptions, I'm sure, but people, people just, oh, okay, I did not know that. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember. We can ask Reagan. Yes, they are the applicant and we haven't, we don't have a motion. So would a representative from Reagan speak to how you regulate messaging?
Thanks for the question. We, we do have, you know, first of all, we self-regulate. But I think there's a distinction again between sign and billboard. You know, we, we, the, the ownership has his name on every single billboard that's in our communities throughout Southern Minnesota and Iowa, North Dakota and South Dakota. That regulation, that self-regulation is, is such that, you know, we actually will oftentimes sign it in a lease agreement that somebody would not be allowed to, maybe if it were near church, they maybe would not want messaging related to pro-choice or pro, pro-choice or pro-life positions. Same-sex marriage topics, things like that, that, that we just wouldn't touch. We would just choose not to accept advertising dollars typically as well. We are state regulated now with the cannabis bills since that was so popular tonight. We are not allowed to advertise cannabis or hemp products in the state of Minnesota. That was a regulation that was inserted and we, on the tobacco settlement order, that's actually the tobacco industry that federally does not weigh in on advertising on tobacco products. Because of that settlement and then also alcohol, we, we cannot advertise alcohol. Those are state federal regulations and, and again, we self-regulate and do those other things. I have another question I'd like to answer, but I don't think I'm allowed to. Correct?
Is it a question that came up?
It, it was and I don't, are we allowed to rebuttal at the end of this then? I could reserve it for that, but that would not allow staff to respond to what I'm about to say. And I would like them to have the opportunity. Because I.
They didn't offer rebuttal because there was no public comment to rebut to.
And again, just as a pattern from the ZBA, from the zoning board of appeals meeting, we had that same circumstance. It was our understanding that we would have a five minute.
I'm happy to give you a five minute rebuttal if everybody's comfortable. It's a little bit and if out of order, but that's okay.
The, the only other thing, and again, this is so staff could respond to it just to clarify, if I may.
I think we're close on done with questions. You want to ask your last question and then we'll let Mr. Pearson launch in?
I'd like to. My question is for staff.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. For me. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Pearson. Thank you for your patience. So the church sign. It, it has scrolling words on it. It, you know, phrases, have a nice day, those kinds of things are churches are generally pretty awesome. But is that allowed? I mean, they're, they're saying things that aren't necessarily church related for their particular business. They're not offensive. They're nice, lovely, wonderful little phrases that are happening, but so help me, I guess it's kind of like Mr. Bransford's question. What, what is allowed on a sign? Then, because to me, it seems like their sign is a small billboard.
Yeah. If, if they were advertising something, I would agree with you, but th- those phrases aren't advertising anything.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That, that was my question.
All right. Mr. Pearson, come on up. You have five minutes.
Actually, I just want to answer this one question. If that's all right. The, the, the response that we would not have been entitled to a sign credit is not true. We're too close to a residential property at that site. So it was a non-conforming board and I'm sorry I interrupted. But that is a fact and it's indisputable.
Okay. So you'll keep it within five minutes?
I'll leave my best. Good evening, Mayor. Chairperson, city council members. My name's Carter Clark. I'm the real estate manager with Reagan Outdoor Advertising. Some of this is going to be a little bit repetitive. I think it's fair to say we're all property owners and, and nobody likes to be told what they can and can't do reasonably with their property. You know, the fact that the assumption that Mr. Pickett's property is only suited for one use being reasonable is just not practical. And imagine being told that you can additionally use your property for a billboard only to have that statement reversed a short time later due to a change on, you know, by your adjacent neighbor. You know, does that sound logical? I mean, I think if you read the letter by Mr. Pickett in your packet tonight, you'll, you'll see, you know, what he's speaking to. You know, as you heard, you know, there have been, there has been a billboard in this direct surrounding areas for over thirty years and there's no quantifiable data that has been presented that says it has been injurious to the surrounding areas during that time. We have not found any records of customer or public complaints for that prior location. The movement of this new location, just seventy five feet, cannot all of a sudden and change that entire landscape. With the city of Rochester allowing digital billboards for nearly two decades, it would be difficult to make the assertion that this digital billboard would be detrimental to the public health or welfare, especially with the upgraded technology and planned use thereof that we are committing to utilize at the site. Our property right vested within the sign credit is at stake and the clock is ticking. We had planned to use a sign credit at this location when we filed the initial permit last December and that stance has not changed. And that, by the way, that sign credit was not for this location or park place. It was for another location on North Broadway. The fact that we have bill worked on local church property in Rochester, as evidenced by the letter from Calvary Baptist Church in your packet, illustrates our broad base of landowners and ability to listen to their issues about messaging, lighting and other matters of concern. So we request that you reverse the zoning board of appeals decision with the, with adding the restrictions of using a sign credit, light blocking technology for the digital display and being only one side, one single faced, as long as there's a place of worship is located on the adjacent property to the north. These variance restrictions will be in place in perpetuity and we are also on record of committing to them. And the one thing I will say to Ryan's point of the fear mongering, the same can be said for the slippery slope and the precedence that we don't feel that this is setting precedence and variances should be on a site by site basis. We don't, we don't feel that we plan to flood the gates with variances and have none queued up at this point. So if, if you look at the history, the, the last billboard was built around eight years ago from my accounts. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Any final questions for the applicant or staff before we invite a motion? Councilmember Dennis?
I had a question. So I was listening to your you know, your qualifications here and the last one, being one-sided as long as a place of worship, is that, that, could you, could you read, could you read your three?
Sure.
Ben, please.
Adding restrictions of a sign credit, light blocking technology for the digital, digital display and being only single-faced as long as a place of worship is located on the adjacent property to the north.
So, and I guess I, I'm not a big fan of the last one and, and the reason being is I the sign of inward six and the reason I think we have right regulations is to protect neighbors who, who aren't part of this process. And I definitely walked around. I have your, your diagram that shows where however, the, the sign is kind of, doesn't, if it was on both sides, wouldn't it be facing the neighbors? I mean, wouldn't it be? I mean, if this was, I mean, if, let's say the church moved, okay? And then you're like, well, we can put it on both sides according to your restrictions. Wouldn't it the, I'm not describing this right, that how the angle of light that would hit the residents' homes in Ward six, would that not? I mean, the way it's facing.
I, I wouldn't say for sure, but I would say if it were, it would have to be rebuilt and, and then it would be oriented to Highway fifty two and it would be entire, it would be entirely tough to get up over the sign, sound wall for southbound traffic on fifty two. So a lot of things would have to change.
So yeah, I guess I just, I don't, I'm not in favor of the last restriction.
Sure.
Just, I mean, businesses change, churches change.
Absolutely.
To protect all the residents who aren't really being considered even in this, this right now, I, I, I just don't feel that, that, you know, we can look in the future and, and say that they're not going to be impacted or buildings aren't going to be built or whatnot. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
So, so I'm agreeing with Ms. Dennis on this and, and would you be okay with just a one-sided sign and, and, and forget the backside? It sounds like it would be almost impossible.
I gotta get the nod from back there, but I am sure. So I got the nod. We're okay with it being one-sided in perpetuity. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. So then, if you're fine with one side. And.
The request is for a once, a variance for a one-sided billboard. So we are in agreement that this is for one side.
But he just mentions one-sided as long as there is a church there. I would like to ensure that it's one-sided in perpetuity and can only be changed to a static, non-lighted board on the north-facing side if by chance that were to come about someday.
Yeah.
Then it would fit in the rest of the existing language around how far it has to be from neighborhoods and other.
And the, and the problem is I, I understand that that's what you want to do. But there's nothing preventing twenty years from now, a new variance request coming in and saying, well, you gave one on the south side, the billboard's not moving, let us go on the north side. Like I, I'm just making that point. Like I agree, this is for a one-sided billboard. I don't believe there is a good tool to say never in perpetuity will there ever be another side on that. I, I just don't think there's a good tool for that.
Is there a way for us to guarantee or, or write this variance? And to have enforcement that they will use the top of the line technology, the best available. Which is my understanding, not been used on a lot of boards so far in Rochester and some of the existing digital billboards are of, I guess what you might refer to as first generation that are. of, I guess what you might refer to as first generation that are quite frankly awful in my opinion.
Similar, similar to my answer at the last council meeting when this came up. You can make that a condition. We don't have an expert on staff that can confirm that that's what they're using, but you can make that a condition and we'll just have to assume that they're meeting it. We don't have a way to confirm that.
I might add that that was a condition that was made on Hyatt House, just as, you know, and so that was deployed as part of that whole, um, conditional, when, when our predecessors took down a, a structure and they built, we built back a, uh, we took over in the interim. That was a handoff project from Fairway, and that was a condition in, in that, uh, made by council. And, and we, we went along with that so that you want to put that condition on there, we, as we committed to here tonight, we, we are committed to putting that technology on the board.
I, I appreciate that, but I feel as though I'd be writing a policy that's based on trust without enforcement for policy, and I just don't think that's a good idea. But I, I, I do hear what you're saying. We can put any condition we want on it and then throw caution to the wind of whether you guys do it or not. I trust that you will though.
Yeah, I think that's what we're going to submit for plans if, you know, as a site, as the amended site plan, I would imagine.
All right, let's get a
Imagine?
Well, yeah, I, I, that we would have to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Okay. All right.
Somebody have a, thank you.
Yeah.
Their motion?
President Carlson, if I could, just one other clarification. There was mentioned that in 2019, there was discussion about, about a billboard there and then, then now a church is there, so there can't be a billboard. And, and I just want to clarify that at no point was a billboard allowed on the storage site, right? There was a billboard to the south of there because of the distance required, there couldn't be a billboard. Then by the time they took that billboard down, there was a church to the north. So it's not as if there was a moment in time when the storage facility could have had a billboard. There, there was never a time where that was allowed.
So, uh, just one more question. So is, would we require them to explicitly say a sign credit would be used for construction?
Sorry. No, that's, that's required.
That's just required. So that wouldn't necessarily need to be a condition. So I'd like to make a motion to overturn the board of a planning and zoning board of appeals to allow for this variance with the two following conditions. That it remain a one sided board in perpetuity, uh, pointing away from the church and that enforceable or not, that the, uh, sign will use the new mitigation latest technology for the billboard.
Second.
All right, councilmember.
Can I, can I ask for clarification just on those three findings?
What's your clarifying question?
Again, are, we need to know what basis you're making that decision off of. So particularly find, the, the other findings aren't a problem. It's particular finding B, C, and E. We're looking for some guidance on how you came to that conclusion.
Well, uh, this is quasi judicial, not judicial. Uh, so, and I can interpret these as well as anybody. It is a practical difficulty because of the fact that, in my opinion, the church wasn't there. It was a karate studio while they owned the property there it came. So I think it's, it's, they do have a practical difficulty meeting the zoning provision due to the fact that the church appeared later on. Extraordinary conditions are created by the fact that, um, uh, let me think about that one for a minute. Uh, and it does definitely not alter the essential character of the surrounding based on the fact that the church itself has a billboard that is in an industrial complex that a billboard existed 75 feet away already. Um, criteria and C. I'm going to have to ask for a little help from staff or Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Palmer.
I think C is that the landowner didn't create the church.
Sure. Okay.
That one was about the shape of the parcel.
I read C to mean that the, the, it wasn't self inflicted. Problem.
Site irregularity, narrowness, or topographic considerations. Oh, is the unique nature?
Yes. So that's what that finding, that those parentheses come from that finding. So we're looking for the variance, does the, or, um, is there extraordinary conditions not created by the landowner such as irregularities to the lot size, narrowness, or topographic conditions? So, yeah, so sort of what, what is different about this site that doesn't apply to other sites?
Councilmember Palmer?
I would say it's on Highway 52. That's my opinion.
Mr. Keen?
Um, yeah, I, again, I understand the motion here and I'm, I'm watching. Normally this council is asked to apply their judgment. In this case, this is quasi judicial. This should, should not be just, and, and I just feel we're stretching on these criteria to the point that we're not following the law. Uh, and because that, I don't, I can't support the motion.
Yeah, I, I don't, I agree, councilmember Keen. It's not that there's something specifically worrisome about this billboard. It's that we have to be able to articulate clearly based on the law, and I don't feel like we're doing that. But my colleagues can say otherwise. Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I asked the question about a variance and it's our opinion what the variance is, and, and I think the four of us believe it is that way, that's the way it is. That's why you have variances.
Councilmember Palmer or Keen?
Again, I, I, I understand that the, the logic and I, it could hold. It is not accurate though, that zoning, the zoning board of appeals, which I spent three years on, is a quasi judicial. It is not a judgmental board. It is, it's taking criteria. I, I could commend Councilmember Bransford for looking at the criteria and saying, I interpret it differently, and I think that's what you have to do, but you're going to have to do that and not just say, we're going to make the judgment that this is okay. And again, that's where I, I just feel like I'm in un, uncomfortable territory because I, I, I could make the case that, that, again, the church doesn't care. The church wasn't there before. The, the thing is orientated away from the church. I, I could find all kinds of reasons to try to support this. But the zoning board of appeals is there because we have zoning and state says if you have zoning, you must have an appeals method, and if you have an appeals method, you must have criteria. And you, it isn't a judgmental thing. It is following criteria. So that, that's where I'm at. I, I don't mean to impose that thinking on others.
Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, um, just thinking back on the planning and zoning packet or the, uh, the board of appeals, were there alternate findings created?
The zoning board of appeals adopted staff's findings.
But were there, were there alternate findings put forward?
The applicant provided some, I, I believe, but we, we propose our professional findings. We don't propose both sides of every application. We propose what we believe.
In the packet, though.
Actual, that, that's what I was just making sure, just being clear.
Yep. Councilmember Dennis?
So, so just, I'm sorry to, to, we have to go through these criteria and, and just give a reason. I mean, the applicant, um, Reagan gave reasons. I mean, I, like, that I thought were, I, what? I thought they were very logical. I, I feel there are, this is, um, in the spirit of the law, I think, I, when you look at, there, there's no trees planted, it's not going to, you know, they can't have trees because of the way the properties are here. There's, uh, it's highway. I mean, I think it's a, it's a very, um, poor place for a billboard. It's, it doesn't impact residents. I walked around, I didn't see how this is hurting anyone. So I don't, um, I guess I don't. I guess maybe clarification. So for us to vote to uphold this, um, to, what are we doing?
Motion is to overturn.
Overturn. We have to, as a council, go through each one of those and give reasonings? I guess I'm, I'm so confused.
Well, staff is asking for direction for how we are finding that it's okay to overturn their findings as well as the zoning board of appeals.
And Mr. Bransford's done that.
They provided some thoughts. All right, well.
Do a roll call.
Sure. Would you call the roll? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Keen?
Nay.
Councilmember Bransford?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick? This is my thing to pause for a long time. Want to make any comments? Uh, you can, yeah, she can very briefly say why she's voting. Yes, no, you can't make extended comments. I can't ask any more questions. We're doing the roll call vote right now. Yeah, that was a little low. Pushy, Mr. Palmer.
I just wanted on record that I have been exceedingly honest and transparent with Reagan, that I am very against digital billboards. I wish none of them ever existed. I'm offended every time I drive to Montana through the I-90 corridor. This is brief. However, this technology is pretty extraordinary, and I appreciate you taking the time to do this. I wish more organizations would reach out the way you did. But I don't want to see any more billboards in our city. This will be the last one, and I don't know how we can control that. So I.
Right. Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, well, in the spirit of a comment, uh, for the Amber Alerts and the protection services, uh, I, I, I think this kind of is a good service for our community. So I.
Council President Carlson?
Nay.
Motion passes five to. All right. Thank you, everyone. Been an hour. Sorry, we're going to keep going, but please do get up and take a moment if you need to, um, as we get started on these next items. So I will turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Spinner Craig, to introduce our outside counsel for item G four.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, yes, I will briefly introduce item G four and then turn it over to outside counsel, Jason Kubaschek. Insistent with, uh, the RCA in your packet as well as email communication from prior today. Just want to kind of set the table, what the request is of counsel this evening. Um, we are asking for the opportunity to, to open up these public hearings with the initial, uh, staff recommendation via Jason Kubaschek. And that you then open up the public hearing to allow anyone who is here this evening to speak to the topic. We will then be, um, asking counsel to continue the public hearing to a date in the future. And as referenced in a prior communication today, um, there's just been some shifting timelines as to how much time we need to get the appraisal completed. So we, uh, our recommendation will be, uh, continuation to the September 18th council meeting. And that same process and recommendation will apply to both G four and G five, but initially on G four, I would turn it over to Mr. Kubaschek, who, uh, should be appearing via Zoom.
I see him. Joining us, hello. Hello, Mr. Kubaschek. Go ahead and unmute yourself and.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor, counsel. Um, Jason Kubushek from Iverson Revers Law Firm. Talking to you, I met many of you on the, uh, site inspection, uh, last week. The, um, cartway process is a three step process. After you have received the petition, uh, the first step is you issue the resolution setting the hearing, and you did that back on July 10th. And contained within that, uh, resolution was a request for security, which covers the city's costs uh, associated with the cartway proceeding. Uh, it covers, uh, any outside appraisal costs, attorneys fees associated with that. And it's our, uh, best estimate as to potential damages to the affected property owners as well as making sure that we have adequate security if the, uh, council's, uh, cartway decision is appealed. The second step in the cartway process is the site inspection, which you, uh, had last Monday. Exhibit A, uh, is up and it shows in the green is the, uh, proposed, uh, cartway location. So the, uh, petitioner's property, uh, is, uh, two properties located, uh, near the top of exhibit A. The, the first one, uh, has the, uh, writing boxed in red and boxed in green. That's the first parcel. And then the second parcel is just to the right of that. Petitioners have proposed a cartway which follows the green path, so it crosses the affected, uh, property owner. In this case, it's, um, Bill and Emily Buck, and they own not only the, uh, affected property where the cartway is, but also the property just to the right of it, where you see the other residents. The, uh, proposed cartway then goes through the Buck property, uh, moves, uh, on the screen towards the left, and then will go down towards the bottom. Um, and as I pointed out on the site inspection, a near Corv road, uh, there is a portion there still on the Buck property that is not covered by an easement. And the easement is, uh, the blue area there, it goes, uh, along, uh, the highway, uh, up to Cycle City. Then the easement actually goes all the way to Cycle City and touches a portion of the Nessar, um, Higgins property. However, there's a gap in this easement, uh, so it doesn't go all the way to Corv road. So that's what has been proposed, uh, what they've asked for. We've had the, like I said, again, the first step was the resolution which set this hearing. In talking to the petitioner's counsel, uh, that resolution, uh, was served on the affected property owners. We then too had the, uh, site inspection, and now this is the third step, which is the public hearing. And as the city, uh, city attorney has indicated, um, this is probably the first of several public hearings, uh, in part because, uh, the appraisal process and trying to determine what the damages are associated with this cartway, uh, or proposed cartway location. The appraiser is taking longer than we anticipated, and so we're having to kick out the continuation of the public hearing until September. Originally, we thought it was going to be, uh, August 7th, uh, for the continuation, but unfortunately the appraiser is not able to meet that deadline. After the site inspection on the 17th, I was approached by, uh, the affected property owner, uh, Mr. Buck, uh, who has indicated that he will be in attendance tonight, and I'm not there, but I'm assuming he is. Uh, but he was going to be unable to be in attendance on August 7th. And so even though this public hearing is going to be continued, he had requested an opportunity to speak to you today about his concerns regarding the cartway. If he is in attendance and wishes to do that today, uh, I would certainly recommend that be done. If he wishes to wait until the 18th of September, now that that date has been moved out because of the appraisal, he can do that as well. Uh, and what we're really looking for, if he doesn't want to speak, uh, is a motion just to continue this public hearing until September 18th. The, there will be no further, uh, served notice that I, the petitioners, but we will, uh, publish notice again of that September 18th meeting. So everyone's aware of it. Uh, and with that, I will, uh, take any questions, uh, Mayor Council has on this matter.
All right, we will get back to you after the applicant has had a chance to speak. Actually, we, let's see, Mr. Spinner Craig, how, we won't be asking staff or our council questions today because we'll continue the public hearing and we usually ask questions after.
Agreed.
Okay. All right. So with that, I will invite the applicant or representative of the applicant to speak.
We're the applicant. It was our understanding.
So I'm Scott Thompson, uh, representative of the applicant. We were on, it was our understanding that we would do this. So I'm Scott Thompson, representative of the applicant. We were on, it was our understanding that we would do this at the continuation on the 17th. There was supposed to be the seventh, but in September.
Okay, just give me one second, Mr. Spindler Craig. So the applicant is saying they prefer to speak on the 18th. When we will likely continue it to, can they speak during the public hearing instead?
I would suggest that you grant them the leave to, to speak on the 18th, on the continued date. In part, the rationale for that is that their comments and perspective to you will be informed in part by the appraisal process that they receive.
Okay, I, I certainly understand that. I just want to make sure process wise, so we'll still open the public hearing. Mr. Buck can speak. He's signed up to if he'd like to. And then before we reopen the continued public hearing, we would invite the applicant to speak.
Yes, that would be my suggestion. I know it's different than your normal process, but I think what, what needs to be done here.
Okay, Mr. Palmer.
I, I just want to note that if somebody speaks at this public hearing, they cannot speak in the September 18th.
Yes, but we're talking about the applicant right now.
Correct, but if you speak during the public comment period, you're not allowed to speak.
But so the, is everybody comfortable with that recommended process? So we'll.
Just one clarification. If Mr. Buck does not want to speak tonight, we probably should not open the public hearing. Is that accurate?
Well, he signed up to speak.
Okay.
And he's here, so.
And I think what I understood from the attorney, we should give him the choice if he wants to, or if he wants to speak on the 18th.
Do you want to say whether you would like to speak and then we'll make the decision on process?
Okay, can I speak today?
Would you like to speak today?
And?
No, you get one, one time for five minutes. No pressure.
I'll wait then, because I.
Mayor.
This came up really quick.
Okay, then you have until September 18th and you'll be able to hear from the applicant before. Okay, but I'm sorry that you had to be here this evening. Yes, Mr. Kabushak, were you talking?
I was apologizing, Mayor. I was just going to suggest that I would recommend, Mr. Buck, wait until the 18th because we will have the appraisal at that point. And he will have the opportunity not only to weigh on the cartway petition itself, but also as to the damages suggested by the appraiser and whether or not he agrees with that proposed damage award.
Okay, sorry for that awkwardness in process, but then I would invite a motion to continue the whole item to September 18th.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Wall, anything, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alafos, aye, aye? Motion carries. Okay, so we'll see you back here on the 18th of September. Thank you so much for being here. Right, we'll move on to our second cartway item. Mr. Spindler Craig, go ahead and introduce. And then is Mr. Kabushak also speaking on this item?
He is, Madam President. Just briefly, yes, on item G five, same process that we are suggesting on this matter. To our knowledge, there is no one here this evening anticipating speaking at the public hearing.
Okay.
So I, I would anticipate that, that you just continue to that same date. But with that, I would turn it over to counsel.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
He meant outside counsel. Outside, yeah. Our legal counsel, you're inside. All right, go ahead. When you're ready, Mr. Kabushak.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Again, this is just like the other one. This is one of those unique situations where the city of Rochester has two cartway proceedings at the same hearing. So I will streamline this matter, but again, due to the difficulty with the appraisal, we're recommending a continuation of this. The petitioner has, we have obviously set the original resolution. We had the site inspection. And now we would be set for the public hearing. The potential damage award would be something that both the petitioners as well as the affected property owner would want to speak on, I believe. So I would recommend that we continue this to the 18th when we have that information available.
Okay, same issue with the applicant, Mr. Spindler Craig. Are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so would you just step up to the microphone and we can have this conversation together? So would you prefer to speak tonight or when you have more information on the 18th?
I'd prefer to speak the 18th, I think. But I wouldn't like to make a comment procedurally if I could about waiting until September 18th. It's my understanding that the appraisal is not exclusive of acting on the petition. You guys can act on the petition and then hold off on opening the cartway until the damages are appraised. And I, it's, and I'm just throwing that out there because I know we would like to move things along as well.
Sure, no, we, we had this brief discussion. It's, it's our position that the, both the public hearing aspect as well as council's consideration should be informed by the appraisal. And that's the reason that, that we're recommending the, the later date.
All right, so we'll invite you back to speak on September 18th, as long as council approves a motion to continue to September 18th. Is there a motion?
I move to continue the public hearing to September 18th.
Second. All right, Councilmember Wall.
Nothing.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alafos, aye, aye? Motion carries. So we'll see you back here on September 18th. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was the first I've done of those, so. We are done with our. We're done with our public hearings and let's do item H one. Calling a special election regarding the extension of a local sales and use tax to finance various local capital improvement projects. And Clerk Geisler, Clerk Geisler and Mr. Parrish, do you want to just tee us up for this one? Would you like Mr. Parrish to?
All right, we have a break. I mean, it's a good break now or?
Sure, we can take a five, five-minute break, come back as soon as you can because we're a little short. 10:15, yes.
Recording stopped.
Getting back to item H one, so we are going to turn it over to Mr. Parrish, correct?
Yeah, President, members of the council, Mayor. I won't go through the, you know, previous presentation that we did upon your original approval of the ballot language for this item, which you approved at your previous meeting. Subsequent to that, the mayor exercised her authority under the charter to veto the item. And so as the clerk's note suggests in the staff report, you have the opportunity then to consider overriding that veto. It does take a super majority of the, of the entire body, which is five of you. And so you can consider that this evening. Just note that that's really the only item you can consider. You can't consider adjustments or different evolutions of the, the particular item. If you want to do that, that'd be something you'd have to consider at a subsequent meeting. With that, we're happy to stand any questions that you might have on the item or defer to your discussion.
All right, questions? Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Norton?
Yeah, I just thought I would address this very briefly. And just reiterating my rationale for the veto, which was, I think it's incumbent upon us to think about our constituents and what, what they would like. And I believe that they would like the opportunity to be able to choose to vote yea or nay on each of the four items. So that was the, my rationale for the veto. I had asked that of staff earlier and made it clear that that's what I had supported and I had hoped for, and that didn't happen. That's fine. You know, this, this body will do what it's going to do. But it wasn't to be malicious. It was to say, I think our community can decide for itself what they want to support on each of those four items. And that was my veto and that was my message.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Keen?
I was just trying to understand, is the, or the, would the motion be to restate the, should we state what we passed last time? Or is the motion to support or override or how, what is the motion?
The, the motion is to override the veto.
Okay. Then I'll make the motion to override the veto.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen?
I mean, I understand why we're here. I've gotten fair amount of feedback in support of the mayor's direction towards giving that level of control. And I, I understand at a certain level, there's a certain amount of like transparency to that. My, my concern is that those aren't the average people that are going to be voting in November. Those are the people that are super involved and watching things closely. I think the state gave us the ability to break it up like that, but they also, I think wisely saw that it can get confusing that way. And for clarity reasons, I think the better way for the city of Rochester to present to our voters is a simpler set of language, which, which was, which was vetoed.
Councilmember Palmer?
Nothing else.
For one?
I do remain in support of the original resolution and will vote to overturn the veto. I think all four items are critical to the health and the well-being of Rochester. Part of the feedback that I've gotten since the veto is that we simply don't know what this sports complex is going to be. I think this afternoon, this presentation went a long ways to answer those questions and to assure us that this is not some kind of shot in the dark, but it's a well-researched possibility for Rochester. Provide opportunities for the community to extensively use the facilities. This weekend, I was at a huge softball tournament in Cottage Grove. I was visiting with a father and a daughter from Wayzata. That's 35 miles away. They did not commute to this multi-day tourney. Instead, they stayed in a hotel in Cottage Grove, 35 miles away. Oh, and we were having this conversation in a Culvers, which was also supporting the community as they spent their money in the place that was hosting the tournament. I came back to Rochester that same day to yet another tournament. My, my grandkids are in lots of tournaments. This was a much smaller tournament, a baseball tournament in Rochester. And as we were packing up after one of those games, I heard the entire team, the opposing team, talk about where they were going to eat prior to going back to their hotel. I don't think that the sports complexes is some kind of nicety. I think it will really add to the economic vibrancy of Rochester. And we would be well-served by all four, four projects and the one sales tax extension vote. I think separating the questions can lead to a false competition amongst the projects. And it just gets harder to fill in oval after oval after oval, even though it all comes from the same half-cent sales tax.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennis, then Palmer?
That was very well worded. Well, I agree with a lot of the statements.
Well, I agree with a lot of the statements he made. The, you know, we have an epidemic of mental health crises, a crisis here in in our country and youth, seniors. So many people need to get out of their house and get reconnected. And if this is one more opportunity for them to do so is is this sports complex. I do think the public should have a lot more input on what it is gonna be look, you know, entailing and more feedback is needed. But the less confusing we can make it, saying these are priorities, these are in all four of them. You look at reconstruction and water quality. I mean, the out, every one of them is incredibly important. And the more you make it complex, the more time it takes to vote. I all of that, I I feel residents should have choice. But because these have been researched and been, I just feel very strongly that they all need to pass. And then I I wasn't able to meet with Mayor Norton last week. Our our meeting was abruptly canceled, so I haven't heard all of her details on this issue. However, I can see why it was it was vetoed. And I do, I do think residents are wonderfully intelligent and amazing and be able to to research each one. But let's, I I think that's why we're here in office, to to have research and to to have all four of these all together. So I'm just going on and on, I guess, but I will vote to override the veto. That reason. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I think all four are necessary and and, you know, as a kid, I sold candy bars for the rec center to be built. And that really is the last facility that we had built. And I think the city at that time was fifty thousand people. You know, we built a volleyball center and and that's that's at max capacity. And I think that brings people in. The rec center is one of two fifty-meter pools in in Minnesota, which I think are great. But I think also the other items are just as important, and that's flood control. And it was forty-five years ago, and we had the flood and and it cost us about a million dollars a year to 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 keep that maintained, and we need to maintain that. We've fallen behind on roads. This is a way that that, you know, other people can help us pay for some roads and economic vitality. Housing and some other items, and they're are greatly important. And and so I think all four makes sense to vote at one time. The state said that we could do that. I think would be a mistake not to do that. So I'm looking forward to writing the veto and going to the voters and, you know, remember, mid-September is when we start voting. So we need to get our act together and and help make this work.
I would just quickly add, I agree with a lot of what was said. I, the mayor knows that I cordially and respectfully disagree. I think she brought up a lot of really good points that resonated with the community. But I'm gonna agree with my colleagues here tonight, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, and then the mayor.
Thank you. Well, I I I'm not going to vote that way. I'm going to uphold the veto, but I'm not voting to uphold the veto. I am voting the same way I voted last time. I believe that the positive feedback we heard about the regional sports complex can stand on its own merits, the three thousand touchpoints. A thousand-plus remarks and suggestions, I believe it will pass. But I think the public deserves the chance to check every single one of those ovals off, to show to us that they do believe that these are all needs, not just wants, and I want to give them the opportunity to be able to do that. And that that's it. I'm going to vote the same way I did before, regardless of whether there was a veto or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm gonna pass on it. I'm just say something I will regret. And sometimes it's better just to let things go, so I shall. Appreciate that. Any final comments? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries six-one. Thank you, everyone. All right, so the next item is an associated item here, and I believe this one is you, Kirk Easter, or would you like someone else to speak? And this is related to the twenty-twenty-three special election budget request.
Thanks, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton. What you have in front of you is a contingency request for funds to spin up this special election. And I will note I, this is to just pay for the whole thing outright. It doesn't consider any funds we may recoup from Rochester Public Schools because they have not yet formally decided to call their question either. But we have had some discussion with them behind the scenes, and if they do decide to also call a question that we'll be doing the administration and of that for them, and we'll recoup that cost accordingly. So, but we don't have that information now, so we're not, I'm not bringing the request forward in that way.
Okay, that was my question. So thank you for stating that upfront. It would sure be nice to share that cost. Mayor Norton?
Yeah, I have a question. Can we recoup these costs out of the sales tax extension? Should it pass? Or do these have to be paid for out of current general funders budget?
Mayor, I think that we would likely, I I think the decision here is that you would be utilizing a contingency, the one-time contingency funds for this. It's something that we could request feedback from our bond attorney, but typically, I think that you would be A, we don't know if there will be a sales tax extension, so I think that you should assume that you would be spending this from contingency.
Other questions? Councilmember Keen?
I want to make the motion.
Sure.
I'm gonna move to adopt the resolution authorizing the use of contingency in the amount of two hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars for the administration of the twenty-twenty-three special election.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen?
Again, I I'm glad to see this sort of itemized out. I think it's, we're preparing ourselves for this, and we've got other prep to do as far as how to, if there's outside groups we're gonna work with as far as educating the public and engage garnishing the support we want to have.
Thank you. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right, we have a couple council-initiated actions for a change tonight, and we have let's see, is the first one Palmer? All right, so I, one is the council-initiated action revising the ordinance related to motorized golf carts to allow permitting and use of golf carts on city roads that are marked twenty-five miles per hour or less. Go ahead, Mr. Palmer.
Well, I'll start out with a motion to direct staff to initiate an ordinance drafting to allow golf carts in city streets with a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit and to work out any minor concerns.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
It's an interesting CIA, only because it was brought up by a person that's having trouble riding her golf cart. And she'd like to see it done all over Rochester, and right now, we allow it to and from a golf course. And I think this makes sense to an alternative method for people to get around. There's lots of rules and regulations that the state has in our licensing that we already have in place for this, or to also have some rules or regulations.
Could we just take a second and talk through briefly what some of those are? So it, we are required to have a license and insurance to get a permit from the city in order to use a golf cart, even just to go to a golf cart.
Yep, so right now, you need to obtain a permit, so you have to have a special permit for your golf cart. To get that permit, you need to possess a valid driver's license, insurance for the golf cart. The golf cart has to be equipped with a rearview mirror and a slow-moving vehicle sign.
Yep.
And and there are many other state requirements that involve not driving along a city, or excuse me, not driving along a city a county road, a state road, you can cross those types of roads. So there would likely be some, still some constraints in certain parts of town to where people could utilize their golf cart. And likely, you would need a map to go with the permit.
Councilmember Keen?
So I've got some concern with this. As I say, it's very specific to golf carts. Does it imply gators or these other sort of vehicles? Or are they illegal and considered very different?
If you do not define something other than a golf cart, golf cart is defined in state law, so you would continue to limit that to golf carts as defined by state law and your city code.
So I I guess, let me ask you slightly different. When you're okay with golf carts, why are you not okay with gators and other other vehicles being on your streets? How how do you? I'm I'm just, we're, we're doing city ordinance through council-initiated action, which means somebody wants it, they come to one of us. But I I don't find, I'm trying to get my arms around, are we just doing one-off ordinances? Or is there a good reason why it's golf carts, but it's not many other vehicles that are like golf carts?
I don't know if that's a question for me or for Councilmember Palmer, but I would posit that originally and currently, you have an ordinance that allows a golf cart to travel from a residence to a golf course, and so that is likely the reason that you permit golf.
And we already have a, we already have something in the clerk's office for licensing. Again, we have traffic, like slower traffic down our streets. There there might be good reasons to do it. I'm just trying to understand what's next after you do something like this, and is this a good way to do it? All right, I mean, are we really telling the staff, we want to do golf carts, but when somebody else comes to us a month from now and says, but I have this other sort of vehicles, electric or it's gas-powered or whatever, I want to do it too. What is the logic to do it or not do it?
Well, this is policymaking, so this is where our judgment comes in, and I think we're using our judgment to understand what's already in place in our city. What's reasonable, keeping it to golf carts for now, that doesn't mean we have to then move on to these other things. We can continue to use our judgment and reflecting what's appropriate for our community. So I don't, I usually agree with you on so many things, Councilmember Keen, but I think I disagree with you on this one. This one does not seem outrageous to me. The police has not, have not indicated concerns. Public Works Engineering didn't indicate any major concerns. It seems like just a fairly minor change, although we only have three licensed or permitted so far. So it'd be nice to see some increases if people are actually going to use them, so they're following the process. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
So I guess my questions, because I like this idea, but my questions kind of are around Keen's. And I'm glad we have a Parks representative here. You guys are driving your equipment on the roads all the time, but you've got headlights, you've got blinkers, you've got the slow-moving vehicles. How how are Parks tractors, mowers, and everything else allowed on thirty miles per hour above? And to more of that point, there are like implements, agricultural implements that drive on Highway fourteen.
Those are not golf carts. That is the only reason.
So, so what I'm saying is, is why don't we go ahead and expand this to allow for the gators, to allow for the little flat front electric Daihatsu pickup that I'd really like to have? You know, you can't ride a motorcycle without, uh, let's see, when I took my motorcycle license, you gotta have the eye covering. So your your full-face helmet thing has to go down. So maybe golf carts need to have a plexiglass windshield for eye protection, or they have to have sunglasses on like motorcycles do. I have questions about this for safety for the driver, but also for the other folks on the roadway.
Seven miles an hour?
Oh, they can go faster than that. Yeah. Yeah, they can probably go up to thirty or thirty-five miles an hour. Yeah.
Who knew? Or only twenty-five?
Twenty-five? Well, well. Oh, right. Yeah, again, enforcement for a policy.
I'm a rule follower.
I'm not.
No, you're not.
And my insurance policy proves it. But anyway. So I I, you know, I think those golf carts need to have the headlights and the turn signals and the brake lights, like all the other vehicles do on the road.
And the moving sign.
Yep, and the slow-moving sign, and they need to have some sort of windshield, you know, plexiglass zip tied to the columns to the canopy. Quick fix.
Glass?
No, plexi, because it would have to be tempered safety glass.
Now, this is making a policy on the fly.
But 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 the point is, is like Keen was saying, what what's next? So I would like to get all of these in there as we're doing it. I mean, if we can allow the golf carts, why can't we allow the gators?
Because we're not, somebody would have to propose that. I mean, right now, we're talking about golf carts. We don't.
So maybe I need to make a motion to amend then.
You are welcome to amend away. Go ahead.
Are you fine if I amend it?
He doesn't get to decide. Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, what's your wording there, Keen?
Okay, we'll amend it to ask the staff to come back with recommendations also for other you till the utility vehicles.
No.
No?
Is that your formal motion?
Thinking, what are they called, ATVs or?
ATVs and UTVs.
This isn't just golf carts.
I withdraw it because I don't have a second. I withdraw my motion.
Well, I don't think you were finished with your motion. I would have seconded it.
I'm done.
He was joking. Oh. Councilmember Dennis, go ahead.
Make sure everyone, all right, thank you. So I was fortunate to have talked to the board five resident on the phone for quite a while and hear and heard her motives and and reasoning and why she was proposing this. And I, my heart is out to her for those reasons, for sure. So I've done a lot of asking around, and there's a lot of small towns that have this already passed that do it very successfully. But we have a town of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. I mean, we have a, but the third largest city in the state of Minnesota. And I I have a lot of apprehension because we have people who who are already distracted drivers, people who I have a hard time seeing motorcyclists and who have a hard time, you know, you know, navigating the streets around things that aren't cars, like lime green scooters. I'm not sure any of you have had complaints about those. But I know people I have talked to aren't thrilled with the idea of having more not extremely safe vehicles that are not easily seen because you're not looking for them. I mean, when I'm driving, I'm very familiar with looking for other vehicles. I I've conditioned myself to make sure I'm looking for motorcycles, which drive a little bit faster than golf carts. And I just worry that there is so much unknown safety issues with this. Uh, kids who are routinely driving golf carts, yes, they might not have a license, or they might have. But I can see a kid getting behind the wheel of one of these. And then what happens when one of these giant SUVs, which I've been watching a lot of safety about pedestrians being hit? More and more people are driving these these massive vehicles, and it's one of those vehicles hit a golf cart with a couple people in it, children. Who, I mean, that there's, I know which vehicle would win that, who, or I guess, I know who would walk away from that situation. So I am really scared about the safety of residents. I'm really scared about how it sets the precedence of of what else are we going to allow on the roads and and to enforce it too. I mean, you know, kids who, I'm not a golfer. I love to learn to golf and golf. But I know my kids would love to be in golf carts, and if had the opportunity to drive around town on a on a golf cart, most of our streets are twenty-five miles an hour, and I just, I worry a lot with the safety of it, the unknown issues. And then when you factor in all the other stuff, you know, distracted drivers, road constructions, different different enforcement issues. I I just, I think our city is too big to have this as a city law.
I will say, Councilmember Palmer, and to Councilmember Keen's point about making policy through CIs, I would love to see CIs come back with the recommendation for staff to look into some of these issues. How is this best done? Is it appropriate here in our community with a little bit of more information before we just draft an ordinance? So that would be what I'm most comfortable with in the future, a friendly suggestion. But if there's no amendment or suggested change to doing that, I still think it's an okay. Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I, when I understand the state laws and the idea of crossing over these other streets, it does seem fairly minor impact. At the same time, I just find this is a poor way for us to be setting policy. I like, like you said, CAs are supposed to be a way to get staff tying to look into something to come back with this. We don't write them that way lately. We write them to direct certain things to be done, and because of that, I won't support it.
Any final comments? Councilmember Patrick?
I thought when you first started talking, Mr. Palmer, that you did say that you wanted to direct staff to draft an ordinance that would gather some more information, didn't you?
And to work out any any minor concerns.
About golf carts?
Golf carts.
Okay, so that's what you said, but that's not what's here. Considering prioritization of staff time to revise a city ordinance waters golf carts to allow the permitting use of golf cart city roads mark twenty-five miles or less and then calculated according to state statute regulating. So there's no, there's no direction of staff to kind of analyze and assess. You're just requesting staff to revise the city ordinance. You're just requesting staff to revise the city ordinance and.
My motion, I'll read it again.
Okay.
Is to direct staff to initiate an ordinance drafting to allow golf carts on city streets with a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit and to work out any minor concerns.
Okay, I guess minor concerns could be those things that we've brought up.
I know it, it says to permit them. It, it does say, do this.
And make the exact motion that's in the.
Yeah, the motion he just made is different than the action requested.
I, I still, I maybe I didn't hear it right, but I thought allow the permitting and use of golf carts.
So maybe I could provide some context about how you actually approve an ordinance that would be drafted, which is if the CIA is approved, we would work together as a team to make sure whatever language is in an updated, recommended permit language for golf carts on city streets on with twenty-five miles an hour or less with the other provisions. Maybe there would be more that we would recommend. Perhaps we would recommend that they always have to have a map. These are other minor concerns that I think that we would want to bring back to you. And it would be about golf carts specifically, which would be revising an existing ordinance. It would come back to the city council, much like you had over the last two meetings with the cannabis ordinance. You would have the opportunity to vote yes or no. I think if you voted yesterday, you'd be signaling that you're open to further consideration and open to more, um, use of golf carts. And some of you may not be, uh, for a variety of different reasons, completely reasonable. We are not initiating this as staff. It is coming forward through a policy discussion of the city council. You will have another chance to do that if you approve this. If not, I suppose that sometime in the future, someone could bring something else forward that said they wanted a smaller scope or a different scope. But what we would be looking at based on that motion is a revision to the existing section of ordinance to expand the permitting of golf carts beyond the home to the golf course to twenty-five mile an hour city roads. And we might want to clarify some of the other state laws that apply to that in that ordinance.
Thanks for that.
If it's a, if we're given direction to bring you something back.
We aren't adopting an ordinance, obviously. Tonight, we're just starting the initiation process.
We're not writing any policy on the fly. We're just, yep.
Right, yeah, I, I like it. All right, let's go ahead and vote on Councilmember Palmer's motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Right, motion carries five, two. All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, you're up next with your CIA. Title, it is the removal of city-owned parcel number eleven from high priority designation. You ready to go?
Yes, I believe I am. My, uh, oh my goodness, thank you so much. I believe, uh, a map is going to be pulled up. So here is, so here is the, um, the CIA that's in the packet was not the last one that I had sent. So I don't know if we want to read through it very quickly. So if you could scroll up, please. Thank you, Rachel. So the council's top priorities, I'm just going to briefly go through this, but read along, please. Our housing, economic vibrancy, growth management and affordable living. If you look at our strategic priorities, actually affordable living is the topmost, um, strategic priority that we have. Affordable living includes various things like, uh, accessible housing, um, that meets the economic needs of our population, food security, transportation that's, um, affordable and gets us to where we need to go. This first came to us, and I do want to mention that in the agenda packet, the report narrative and then on page, at the bottom of page two ninety-five, it shows that the historical information on parcel eleven in the Homestead Park neighborhood, this historical information is not accurate. What's missing is, um, when we talked about this the first time on August sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. And I've reviewed that video on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And it's interesting, the comments that came up during that time when we were discussing these parcels. For instance, um, at that time, Councilmember Bransford expressed concern regarding the community engagement that would come about and the city honoring the neighborhood's use of parcel eleven, parcel eleven, please scroll down, Rachel. Parcel eleven is highlighted in the green square on the map, currently being used as a community garden. The red square denotes, um, the suggested location where the garden should be moved to. And, um, Councilmember Bransford commented on this and that he, he wanted to make sure that the neighborhood got its fair shake and that we'd move the parcels off the list if they did not. Councilmember Bransford also stated fiercely, uh, neighborhood advocacy. And he'd go down in flames on this one. And we've both since discussed this, that yes, perhaps now that we're more seasoned, we might not say things like that. We might leave them in, in reserve, uh, to just think about. But he really wanted the neighborhood to listen to on this one. President Carlson, you stated that you weren't ready to support the parcels moving forward as characterized as low-density residential. Mr. Parrish, you acknowledged our ability to exclude parcel eleven from the list of properties if we desired. And also you further reiterated when asked that the Homestead Parcels eleven, twelve could have some combination of uses. The most compelling, um, statement that was issued, uh, came from Mr. Campion. And he stated that our strategic priorities are often in conflict. And I think that's what's happened here with parcel eleven. Our pursuit of housing, which, yeah, we are in a desperate situation with housing, much like most of our nation. But I posit that putting up two townhomes for two single families on that corner with a really awesome agency that perhaps may apply for this parcel Rochester area foundation. The capacity to do good or to impact positive change in a community or to build a community up will not come from housing. It comes from people. This community garden supplies food to many, many, many families. Food is driven to folks in other neighborhoods. Multicultural families walk through along this street and you can see just north and veering off to the left, that pathway, a, a trail that goes up into the historic Homestead addition. If the garden were moved to the red square, you no longer have pedestrians bypassing, you no longer have food picking, picked up at, at the drop location where folks have been able to pick up free veg. You, you no longer have a bench where, um, kids sit and read books. This is just north of, um, eight and a half street and south of eight and a half street. We have one of the highest concentrations of low-income accessible housing. I'm talking about thirty percent AMI Section Eight housing, one of the largest portions of Section Eight housing in the city. This garden does so much more for our community than a two-family, single household townhouse could do. And the reason I brought the CIA forward is because the neighborhood is upset. This is not a dissimilar situation to what has happened with the Southwest Trail. At the May Park Board meeting, the vote was, was changed at the last minute because of a statement that was made by one of our leading Parks people. And a Park Board member felt coerced. The Neighborhood Association member that was at this particular Park Board meeting felt that facts were not stated to the Park Board. Felt that information was not accurately shared with the Park Board so that the Park Board would feel that they needed to change their vote, a particular member. So I'm bringing this forward because it's not dissimilar from the Southwest Trail. I acknowledge that we need housing. We need housing desperately. But taking a community garden off of a prominent corner that offers social services of, of a sort to multicultural, low socio-economic, low-access families. It is not the right thing to do. Secondly, you've got a permeable surface there for stormwater management. The red square is actually in a prairie and you can see the trail through this area. This prairie has living cover with living roots that go dormant. And that is actually a better best management practice than a garden that gets tilled every year. There won't be public access the way that the green square has public access. And last, this neighborhood paid in excess, out of their pocket, pooling their money together a couple of decades ago to purchase that land along with parks to put in this prairie. The community, this neighborhood association has already given above and beyond to provide a public service with this prairie. Because, um, if, if you're familiar with this area, there was supposed to be another road. So where the red square is, that road would have continued west, swung up northerly and then continued east to anchor with the end, which I believe is Duran Court. But mail run runs through there. The subdivision was never continued because of the high water table. So you're going to be moving a garden into an area that has a higher water table. And I, I'm not going to go on about this, but I feel really strongly that we allow this neighborhood association to keep the community garden where it is. Our neighbors, um, sponsored them with a grant. I believe ship has sponsored them with a grant. In two thousand eighteen, they won, um, the RPU Olmsted County, Sustainable, uh, Food Practices Award, the environmental, uh, award. The garden, the way it is, is an excellent use of these two parcels. And then finally, just to the southwest of that green square, you can see a large open, um, space. That would be parcel number twelve. And the neighborhood is applauding the use of putting up three townhouse units there, even though that space is readily used by many of the kids just south of eight and a half street, um, to play in that open area because they don't feel safe walking down the street to the Homestead Park that's on the corner, the, the southwest corner of that image. So I'm not going to elaborate anymore. That's it.
Do you have a motion?
Well, I do have a motion. Thank you for asking. My motion is, remove city-owned parcel number eleven from the City of Rochester summary of property recommendations list.
Is there a second?
A second.
I think you've about used your eight minutes. I wasn't keeping close track of time, but is there other discussion? Councilmember Bransford, then Keen? Oh, oh, sorry, Councilmember Palmer had raised.
Let Mark go first.
But I, I was just going to say, going back and watching old council meetings, I, I don't do that because one thing I've learned up here is to, uh, it's okay to have a non-expressed thought. And I've learned that lesson very, very well. So if I was a little intemperate that night, I apologize. I think it's important to have this discussion. I do have a, some conflicting priorities here for sure with housing versus, keeping a garden in place. And I'd like to hear what a few other people have to say. I, my mind isn't completely made up and I'd like to hear some discussion.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, if you would remember, um, during that meeting, I had said that I've known that neighborhood very well and the fight that they've had and, and, I was at the Park Board meeting and, and I complimented Mr. Nigberg on, on how well he did on his presentation. And I thought he was very fair in his presentation. And I think it was, um, done well. I don't think it's like the Southwest Trail. Housing is such an important need and I just cannot believe I'm sitting here listening that we need a garden over two families who could be living in their own home and building wealth on this corner. If this isn't an example of Nibbyism, I don't know what it is. I don't want it in my neighborhood. I want a garden. The park department bent over backwards to say, oh geez, we can move your garden. I, I think it's taken advantage of the park department. I, I don't know why they even allowed the garden in first place. But you, you know, at some point, somewhere, somebody's going to build a house and live in two houses. Two families are going to live there. And, and you don't want them in a cornfield. You don't want them here. You don't want them there. Where, where exactly would you like somebody to live? I think that entry-level homes is important. I think that we could have five new neighbors in this neighborhood. I think that is a great facility. It's a great neighborhood. I, I, I just can't even believe that we would even think that a garden is more important than two families living in a home. That, that just, I, I don't know what else to say.
Councilmember Keane?
I, I wanted to ask staff, and I think this, Mr. Parrish, you might have the background on this. I think we, for what, early on, discussed ownership of this. Is that all free and clear now that this is a city-owned parcel? And the only thing we're talking about, whether it's on the priority for sale list or not?
Yeah, I think I'll defer to Ms. Steinhaus, or whose team's really focused more specifically on this. But that's my impression is it's, you know, eligible for re-use. And it was brought to you initially with that full package of parcels that were prioritized for disposition, but I'll, I'll defer to.
The area is correct. It's city parcel that can be disposed of.
My, my question was, is there any dispute on that anymore? Because I, I know we used to have people come to open comment period and talk about that they had purchases from the builder or some sort of swap. Is that all done or is that still in the, in the mix on these discussions?
No, the, the, what exists on the property, I think it's complicated, but there is, when we build on there, there is, um, specific type of housing that can be built on there so that it's complementary and, um, looks similar to what is already exists in the neighborhood so that there's compatibility from a design perspective. But from a parcel disposition, it's ours to dispose of.
Okay, because even in this list, it says city and it says dash parkland. And I think of parkland as different than just city-owned property.
Can I, is there a comment?
Hold on, clarify for a second from what Mr. Keane just said.
Okay.
If you're looking at the table that's in my CIA, that is the table from the initial August meeting. And that was when Mr. Campion had commented and you just made a similar comment to what you made back in August. But Mr. Campion made the comment that we were trying to kind of circumnavigate this when what we should just be saying is just, you know, strike these from the city parcels. But at that point, they were park parcels. And the Park Board voted in May to turn them over to the city, I believe. So that's, I think, what you're getting at, Mr. Keane.
So there is no claim that they're parkland and there's no other ownership claim that's important to what's in front of us?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Did you have a follow-up comment? All right, Councilmember, my, um, Palmer?
I think it's. I already talked.
If you're ready to go, go ahead. Member Dennis?
As you know, I always try to wait to the end so that, so that I didn't, um, so much waste the staff's time with questions. But I do feel, um, this is a really difficult situation, I believe, Campion, uh, Councilmember Campion did it well with being two priorities. However, I, I look at this man and I haven't been to this, or can't recall coming to this, but it's a lot of green and a lot of houses that have yards that could potentially have gardens. And I understand the importance of community. I understand the importance of, of food and, and connection. All of that is incredibly help, incredibly important. We have, um, people who, who are isolated and like I said, um, with mental health people. In my neighbors are ending their lives, literally, um, because of loneliness. And I feel this is really important to have that connection. But when we look at our allegiances and what's. But when we look at our allegiances and what's I told people when I ran and I and I um I and I believe it with all my heart that there are people living in their cars and people who are without homes. And I I just can't in good conscience say that that we would give up two homes, just like councilmember um Palmer mentioned, for you know, two places people could live and and help with this housing crisis. When gardens can be in a lot of other areas and I and I I hear I hear um your concerns, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, but I do see there is mapped out areas for gardens, not ideal. Necessarily, not perfect, but um gosh, if if it keeps kids from sleeping in their cars, I mean, I'm gonna vote housing, uh you know, if in this situation. So um I I have to say that I I can't support this today.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennis. I think there have been some really important points raised. The idea that you bring up uh or the ideas, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, around affordable living are exactly how I think of affordable living. And my backgrounds in supporting SHIP and initiatives that really take into account access to food also has to do with community building, and gardens are an example of that. So I absolutely appreciate that. My recollection of these previous conversations is that we asked staff to work with the neighborhood to come up with a a solution that could be accommodating for multiple needs. My understanding from staff and our previous discussions is that the neighborhood agreed with a year delay and moving the garden and that that was acceptable to them. Ideal, no. But a a way that would allow a continuation of a garden, not perfect, like you said, but would also add uh uh homes for two additional families in a wonderfully vibrant little neighborhood. So I think it's, there's not a great I wish we could do the garden where it is, but it's a city parcel, so I don't see that its life is forever anyway, and it seemed like the transition plan was was acceptable. So I don't know what exactly changed, other than maybe some miscommunication or concerns from a few people, but I haven't heard from the neighborhood since that original meeting that they've they're really upset about this. I I'm not hearing them tonight, so that doesn't mean they're not, but this is like there's no great answer here situation, but I'm gonna listen to the rest of the discussion and then decide if there is any more discussion. Councilmember Law, anything?
I'll just add, this is a very difficult because you're, there are conflicting priorities, and I just want to thank Councilmember Kirkpatrick, Kirkpatrick for bringing her passion to this particular issue. And I've been out to that neighborhood. I've seen the garden. It's lovely. They work hard. They have such pride in it. So it's it's painful um to think that it won't be there, and I guess you know, if if the council's um not interested in supporting this, I I just I don't know how I can just share my passion for the staff to really make certain that what is replaced, the replacement is done right and done well and provides the quality that they deserve out there because they have poured years of work into this, and it's it is just heartbreaking to think all that um pride and effort is not going to be sustained. So I don't know how we can I don't know if we can guarantee that what that we aren't just selling it off and leaving them to their saying good luck, but I hope we can actually do the work to replace that space if that's what if that's the direction this group goes and make sure it's something that they have as much pride and love and passion for um as they do this current piece of land.
Councilmember Keen, then Palmer?
Yeah, uh Council President Carlson, you made a comment that there you've had these different dispositions on this. Can you share those? Because I I don't think I'm up to date on what's happened in the last year and a half with with these properties. With the idea that there was the negotiation with it and agreements, I I'm not up on that.
Maybe Parks can talk or Ms. Steinhauser?
Sure, I I'd be happy to uh provide some background. So this actually goes back a couple of years. We we met on site with the neighborhood representatives, including Miss Suter and um a couple other women, at least one other woman, I can't recall. And we talked about different options. We talked about what we emphasized, you know, the the direction that we've been getting in terms of how we get could get to a yes that satisfied both parties. So not only did we talk about um the current proposed location, we talked about other green space in close proximity. And so just looking at the assets of the neighborhood, if um proximity to the garden for other neighbors was important, would the other site be um desirable? And at the end of the day, um at that me- at that meeting and subsequent meetings where Parks Director, Parks and Market Director Paul Whitman, and then Brent Spenvy from Community Development had follow-up meetings on site, I believe, and additional communication, agreed that um the lo- the the location at the end of the road there was the the planned location for the garden because, you know, closer access to water for the neighbor that provides, you know, water to the garden. Parks agreed to wait for a season, let them get through the 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 summer growing, get through the growing season and coordinate relocation of the trees, the benches, pouring pads if necessary, relocating and setting and reestablishing that garden for them in that new location. So that's
And then that was held off. That didn't happen in twenty-two. They have the garden again in twenty-three, and then starting in twenty-four, it's supposed to switch?
Correct.
Okay. That's helpful to know.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, it's only four houses down from the existing garden, and I will say at the park board meeting, um the neighbors were, we didn't like that location where it's gonna go. Could you move it over here? Could you move it over there? And and Mr. Nigberg said, whatever you whatever you want, we'll move it to where you need it to be, where it fits for the neighborhood. They also um have encroached onto the parkland where to the townhouses are, and you know, uh Mr. Nigberg pointed that out, but but you know, he he didn't say, don't do that. But he I would commend the park department for wanting to work with the neighbors and and that's, I witnessed that at that meeting, so.
Call the question?
I guess. Okay, so the motion is to remove
Parcel eleven.
From the list of high priority Just need to decide how I'm gonna vote before I actually call the question. Give me one second. Yeah. Oh, sorry, your time's up and you've already talked and it's called the question. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Right, motion fails. Thank you. All right, we have a few first readings of ordinances and one second reading. So Mr. Spindler, Craig, go ahead with the three first readings before we have a motion on the second.
Thank you, Madam President. Item J one, an ordinance annexing to the City of Rochester approximately forty-seven point four three acres located south of Scenic Point Drive southwest and west of Scenic View Drive southwest. Moving on to item J two, an ordinance rezoning approximately one point seven nine acres of land from R four, high-density residential to mixed FR mixed-use downtown fringe and amending ordinance number four four seven eight, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota. Moving on to item J three, an ordinance amending the titles of and sections of eleven dash ten dash two through eleven dash ten dash four and amending sections eleven dash ten dash five through eleven dash ten dash seven of chapter eleven dash ten of title eleven of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to residential permit parking zones. Moving on to one second reading, item K one, an ordinance rezoning approximately twenty-four point eight acres of land from R one mixed single family to R three medium-density residential and amending ordinance number four four seven eight, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Move approval?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen?
Nothing yet.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Right, we don't have any tabled items. I know Councilmember Bransford had some other business, and then Palmer as well.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Palmer.
Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you very much. Um there's some confusion, I think, in in today's open comment period about um the park levy money. And so I'm gonna make a motion. And my motion is that at the bid for the Southwest Trail, come back to the city council for approval due to the fact that we're using park levy money. Second for discussion. I just think that there's some confusion on on this park levy money, and it was my understanding that it was going to be um go through the city council. As my understanding, it's supposed to go to the park board tomorrow. I would like it to come back to the city council so that we can say we want this trail to go through, or the bid is high or the bid is low. I've heard some confusing things today that the trail really isn't gonna come um connect, and I'm not a fan of that. But I I'd like the city council to be um the person that spends or the 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 organization that spends the park levy money. Oh, I did have a question. So what, I mean, I appreciate the neighbor's point of view. I'm a little concerned about how the plans have evolved as well, but I just want to make sure that what we do is within our purview. I mean, I would like to see it come back to us as well, but I just want to make sure that that's a reasonable ask. You know, is it something we can ask? Mr. Spindler, Craig?
Is
Or
Is levy money being used in that project?
So I I Mayor President of the council, um if you if you recall, you approved the accelerated investment, you know, of about fourteen, fifteen million dollars, and you've gone through the debt issuance process with that. Um as part of that resolution, you held back a few projects subject to approval of master plans. Um you've approved the master plan for Soldier, so you did satisfy that obligation, and you know, then it sort of then defaults into the park board's funding structure at that point. And then they do all the the bid awarding and all that for execution of the project. So my my initial impression and folks, you know, true Mr. Nigberg and Mr. Spindler Craig and Allison, um Miss Elms would you know, maybe have other comments, but um you know, my impression is they're currently compliant with you know, your previous resolution that you've adopted. There is accelerated investment dollars going into into Soldiers as well as many other funding sources.
So in other words, we've already approved it in what we've approved in the accelerated set of projects?
That and you approved the master plan.
Right, yep. Mr. Nigberg?
Yes, for clarification, as as Mr. Parrish talked about, it came before this board, this body for that review and approval process, and you give that authorization to bid April seventeenth. We went forward now, now that it is in the park board's jurisdiction for that process. We did the same thing for the two bids we've already done for Soldier's Field. We did that for the one-two-five live bidding project as well. Those two came back before you for that authorization as well. The one remaining project that is before you would be Silver Lake. They'll come back before you once we get that master plan. More in that contextual stage for that process.
Okay, Mr. Palmer, did you have a follow-up and then Keen?
Oh, I my my motion is 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 that I was I was either misled or confused, and I want if I'm the only one that that wants this to come back to us, I'm the only one. But I believe that there's at least four people would like it to come back to the city council to look at the bid. I don't think that that's an outrageous thing to ask for.
Councilmember Keen?
I have a question for staff. I'm not sure if this is administration or parks, but the question in front of us almost feels procedural, whether we bring these back or not. Does this request have any uh material difference on the project or timing or what will happen?
Um for clarification, uh it could potentially have an impact on timing. We are awarding bids as fast as we can to make sure we abide by that schedule we set for an April or a May's opening for that pool area. There is one project that you'll come back before you. That is a storm sewer part of the project. You will see that through Public Works. And I'm not sure when they're bringing that back forward to you, probably the next couple of weeks. But that is a different timeline because that is gonna be coming back forward in September. So there's time for that to come back before you to to make that happen. But the other courses of the bids are all intertwined as part of in the aquatics, not on in the aquatics, et cetera, on the entire park.
Yeah, again, I I'm trying to ascertain whether, you know, Councilmember Palmer has a logistics thing here, and he just wants to see the next bill, or we're relitigating what we did back in April. And I'm afraid we're getting into relitigating what we did back in April, and I don't want to support that. But I'm trying to understand, is it is this, does this create a a procedural difficulty that we end up making it more difficult to get the work done that we approved back in April?
I can tell you that right now. Tomorrow's bid opening and approvals for this project will impact the restoration of golf if we don't move this forward. That's one aspect. That's part of what the conversation is with our golf team as well. They want to get that up and running as soon as that project for the storm sewer gets approved and done with. That is all, again, all intertwined with other parts to apply for that approval and improvement.
Okay. All right. So again, I've been through this enough, and uh we've spent a lot of time on both the Soldier's Field master plan and the different parts of it. I understand Councilmember Palmer worried about like oversight, but I I'm gonna maintain my vote to not support this because I think it's gonna could have a material impact on the project.
Just tell us what's going on with the gap in the trail.
Be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
As you may or may not recall, um there's two owners that we were contemplating discussing with crossing their property in a current flood control easement. They declined that request. Um I just some interpretation whether we could do that or not. We've chosen not to go down that path and said we'll go around those two properties. They decided that, you know, we made the approval in April with you folks. There's from April seventeenth to, I think it was June fifteenth or someplace in that range, we gave them that chance to have conversations. They ultimately said no through their attorney, that they don't want to do that process. So now we're in the process now to find a solution to go around them. So that's where we're currently at. So there's a gap currently in that process and that construction that we're leaving open to allow one of three different options. One is a lower trail like you'd see under an underpass for a roadway. A second is a bridge section, which we what we talked about from almost day one. And the third option we talked about is a cantilever. I'm not sure it's very viable, but we're looking at that as a possible solution. We're gonna rule it out pretty quickly, I'm thinking, because of cost, but
Okay. All right, Councilmember Dennis, and then I have another comment.
Yeah, thank you. So um I I hope, I don't know, I sometimes I I question uh things, but uh other council members, but uh facts matter and facts are really important. And um we can't just be going off of opinions and and hearsay. I mean, facts are really important, so I'm saying that on many levels, as you may know. But with the uh new information that was brought to us that not all facts were presented at the time of the vote, I I think it's our duty to you know, listen to the arguments, uh transparency and accountability, and we need to um make sure that we practice what we, well, I definitely uh support um more engagement and having good government. Uh so I don't want to see things falling behind, and I definitely want to make sure that uh that, you know, people's time is valued. Uh however, I just, I can't, you know, I'm a big supporter of the trail and I, you know, like how it, you know, passed, and I was a but I I'm not gonna be a hypocrite and say, you know, just because it it went in the favor that I was supporting, I don't think it's I I think it should be still coming back. And and so I would be supporting uh this motion because I feel it's very important to have the real facts, the truth, honesty, laid out when we are making decisions about people's futures. Thank you.
Can you just clarify facts about what?
Well, um where when I was taking notes on what people were speaking of, there is um just some misconceptions on the 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 funding and if it's connected and different, different things that
The DMC question right now, but
I would like
DMC?
Okay, I would, neighbors can maybe, I would come to elaborate. I, well, it happened at seven and it's uh eleven thirty right now, so I I can't go into depth, but the the information that was presented in the letter
Okay.
Was uh, you know, things that we need to make to have um, you know, vote and make policy based on the information that's the facts.
Okay, Ms. Elms?
So maybe I could just recollect April seventeenth, where many of these different things came up. At that time, the council did discuss in detail the So maybe I could just recollect April seventeenth where many of these different things came up. At that time, the council did discuss in detail the Southwest Trail. They discussed that there was not full design of the Southwest Trail and there was encouragement to try to work with the homeowners. That would be most impacted through the easement process to come up with the design and work through easements that would hopefully. Gain access to 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 go through the. The flood control easement. That obviously is not something that those two owners preferred. So it was approved. After there was a motion and then that motion did did not pass. And then there was a second motion where this did pass and it was. To move forward to bid the entire project. So there wasn't. A confirmation that one or the other would be able to be achieved. There was conversation about that. The other thing I think it's important to note was that there was conversation about that this entire project is funded with federal funding. DMC funding, some small amount of park referendum accelerated funding as well as. This grant for the trail. And there was a lot of conversation about that the DMCC board was presented the full project. There was conversation. There was a specific motion at the DMCC board that they did not want to see any material changes. Related to the ten million dollars of funding. There was discussion at the DMCC board about connectivity. Can I guarantee you? And did I at that time? I did not guarantee you that they would need to reconsider that or can like consider that that would be a material change. But that was something that was discussed with the DMCC board. It was discussed at your council meeting on April seventeenth. So all of these things. Were reviewed and covered. We provided a response to the city council that clarified the communication that was coming back from the neighborhood. And, you know, trying to honor that there that will change the character and nature of the neighborhood as well twenty million dollars of. Investment in the park that serves as a regional park as well as a neighborhood park for those who live nearby. So those are still outstanding questions that I don't, I I don't have a firm answer for you whether or not. Coming, coming back would change that. We also. Talked a lot at the council meeting about the desire to continue to move this forward quickly and get all the seasons in for. The remaining elements of park. And so I think it's really important to note that the storm water, the trail and the. Golf all go together and the golf season typically wants to get started. Around the time, maybe a little bit before the swimming season wants to get started. And so that's kind of what's being alluded to here. So I I guess my recollection of April seventeenth was a lot of discussion about this and there was a lot of, there was multiple. Movements and that in the end it did move forward with the understanding that there was not a final design of the trail, but there was a strong. Support that we would. Want to try to work with the property owners in order to gain the easement access. And if that didn't happen, now they're. Moving forward to understand what is a final design that could work to also still accommodate the trail, the stormwater improvements and. Still be able to get the golf park golf course back open in time for the golf season. So those are just context for your conversation.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Mr. Nigberg. Can you explain why a portion of this trail is twelve feet? When I believe nearly all of the other trails in Rochester are ten feet and DNR only warrants ten feet here.
Well, DNR has a minimum recommendation of ten feet. It's not a maximum. So. As we look at our capacity for trails currently, you look at Cascade Lake, you'll get the trails around soldiers field as you go down the river corridors. Those trails are becoming very, very busy. And as we're looking forward to the future. A twelve foot wide trail is what we're we're guiding ourselves on is being that proper size for these higher capacity locations. As was referenced elsewhere in our park, we have ten foot trails and eight foot trails currently. The eight foot trails, we don't build those anymore if we if we can. We try to avoid that because of capacity issues. The ten foot trails, again, we're trying to meet a certain goal there. It's lower volume, lower locations. And there is a segment coming off of First Avenue that's also twelve foot. So again, we're trying to meet the twelve foot size where we can going forward into the future for these high capacity trails.
So are you saying that we're going to be putting monies forward in the future to widen our existing trails or?
Yes.
Where's that coming from?
You folks.
So I think that answer is that that would be an iterative process, much like the capital improvement plan to determine where, when and how. And and also what are the opportune times to do something like that?
Right, I I was sort of being facetious, but thank you for the further explanation. So if we're going to be digging for monies later on to widen the trails, why wouldn't we just stick with an eight to ten foot trail here? Does it make much sense right now in this process to have a twelve foot trail for? Just a number of blocks when the capacity needs to shift anyway in usership. To reduce down to an eight to ten foot park trail. I'm thinking maybe we need some metered lights for ramps or something.
It indeed makes a lot of sense to build a proper sized trail now.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, the 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 motion in in my rationale for it isn't to re revisit the issue, but my motion was to look at. Referendum dollars in the referendum dollars are what was when the 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 grant with the state. So the grant from the state was. Was contingent upon the contingent on the sales tax or the referendum dollars. So that's the reason I like to bring it back to the city council. If it comes back the next city council meeting. Then we're only delaying it maybe two weeks. And so I don't see a two week delay being a huge deal. I think it's referendum dollars, which to me. Are different dollars and we need to 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 touch that with the city council. So that was the rationale for the for the motion.
Councilmember Wall.
How do we bid a project that we don't know what the cost is? If there are three different options with three different costs.
We often bid multiple specifications, but Mike Nickber can clarify more.
So we've had a feasibility report on the Southwest Trail, including the bridge structure, which we believe is the most cost expensive version. That came in at about five hundred thousand dollars. That's where the granting came into play. We actually talked with DNR about this grant opportunity and they suggested going with a higher dollar amount at that point in time to make sure our costs were covered. So that grant from the state of Minnesota covers half of that cost of possibility. And again, knowing that there's other, there's three other options or two other options to consider, we're hoping that one of those other options are coming at less cost overall.
So you have a basic design and so you can put bid alternates out. That's not an uncommon practice for any number of city projects where we feel like. There might be multiple different ways to construct their different significantly, sometimes less significantly costs related to that. And in the bid specifications, it provides bid alternates and then you look at the lowest bid and you consider that in relationship to the cost. And the value of the project.
I'd also add that we've got our engineering team that's on board for the project as well as a. Our owner's representative that have cost estimating experience that provide that guidance to us as well.
Have have. Things materially changed since April seventeenth?
As far as.
As, you know, you negotiated with neighbors that wasn't working.
That's what happened.
Yeah, so we gave them till June, I think it was fifteen, thirteen, someplace in that range to make that decision. Give us their input on where they want the trail to be and they decided they did not want to trail across their property. So that's the material change. Before that point in time, we were still hoping to have a cooperative agreement with them to put the trail on their property. In that flood control easement.
Delaying the trail would not delay the aquatics.
Delaying the trail would not delay the aquatics, but these bid packages, I think. The trail itself is intertwined with four different bidding prices we've gotten. So the fencing and grading and paving. Is with everything else that goes along with the other parts of the project.
So maybe a way to explain that is often on our projects, there are different types of contractors that do very specific work. So as you're bidding out the other trail components. Of this project, not just the Southwest Trail, you bid those in bulk so that you can get the lowest cost possible for them to be out doing all of the work at the same time. Similarly to re reestablishing the golf course, you would want that contractor to be. Doing that at the same time as they're reestablishing some of the northern parts of the golf course near the the. The aquatics components. So when those get bid out, it's not that they couldn't be un. Unentwined, but you would be likely seeing increase. I don't know how much increase, but you'd be it seeing increases in cost of mobilization, increases in cost of. Being able to complete the work and I don't think anyone could assure you of what the difference might be. And that's typically in a, whether it was this project or another project, how we bid that workout.
All right, councilmember Keen.
So so the piece of new business in front of us has to do with just changing a process right now that the staff has got things going towards parks. But materially, it's also changing how things will get started and when work will happen. I I'm concerned here, sitting here in other business that this is coming up this way because what I'm seeing is that. We've had a full meeting back in April where we had had it on our agenda that we were going to talk about this thing. We had people on both sides of it coming in. And somehow or other, we're now at the eleventh hour reassessing it, but no public hearing and no, no notice to the public that this is going on. I know the thing in front of us isn't to change the decision we made back in April. It's just to change. We're getting into sort of like, we're going to take more oversight, which potentially could change the project. I guess I'm uncomfortable with that as the way of changing this thing. And I guess I'm going to look across to my council peers here or staff. I think staff is saying like, yeah, this is other business, you can vote on this, but my take is if you were for the trail. And you're going to vote for this new oversight on it, you might be voting for some change or some. Reduction in timing of it, or maybe just you're you're casting more doubt that it'll ever happen and. I I just find that to be inappropriate way of doing other business. I understand why it's on our agenda because of the. Timing of this, but I also feel like there's just some something miss a foot here.
I'll just quickly say beforehand, it back over to my colleagues. I have a lot of appreciation for all of you and your. Voices and coming to speak tonight, but I'm representing council's position on DMC. I can assure you from the board chair. From the meeting, from Patrick Steve, from staff. This would count as a significant change that would have required us to go back to DMC. You're shaking your heads. I am on the DMC board, as is the mayor. And it was discussed that if there were significant material changes. Of which this would be one to the whole plan, it would have to go to the DMC for approval again, and that would have delayed. You can disagree with me. I appreciate that. But you're wrong. That would no. I appreciate that. We're, I'm not having a conversation with you. I'm just speaking to you. It's outside of the zone, but it was the investment of DMC, the ten million dollars towards the entire project. And we agreed on the plan of the entire project in order to invest the ten million dollars in the rest of the park. So I I know you disagree with me, but I'm just being clear that for me, that's what the easy decision is. It's not that I don't have compassion or appreciate. That it's a disruption, but I I can't certainly change my perspective on that. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, and talk about what we're going to do here is is. The sewer, the storm sewer is going to go in. Underneath the trail. And so that's not going to come to us. For three more months. So we're not really delaying this because they're not going to put the trail and then dig it up. So the storm sewer, you know, the the we're just looking at the bid. The bid could come back to us next, next, the the August seventh. We can look at that. We can up or down it. And then the storm sewer still got to come back to us. So they can't start the project. Top of the storm sewer has been. Designed, bid and put in. And and quite frankly, the storm sewer doesn't even on their CIP budget for six or seven years. But I'm I'm a proponent that if you're going to do the trail, you're going to put the storm sewer in ahead of time. Because I'm not digging up the course twice and I'm not digging up the trail twice. So there's a little, you know, two weeks is not not going to kill anybody in this deal. That's my point. The bid could come to us. Again, it's it's about. The dollar down. And and just to be a note, since I can speak. DMC has got no money in this. They have no money whatsoever in the Southwest Trail. It's not in the DMC area. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of. Park referendum dollars and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct in that statement, but my statement is bigger than that. DMC invested ten million dollars into soldiers field project of which this is part. If there was going to be a substantial change, material change to what we approved as DMCC board. It would have to go back in changing a trail connection that was part of what was approved. Is a materially significant change.
I'm just looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a substantial change in a ten million dollars.
Other, it's not the same thing. Having money in the specific project is different than DMC investing in the whole project. Because they agreed with the vision of the project, including the trail connection. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. So. Maybe I'm a little confused here. Are you saying that DMC monies are going specifically toward the Southwest Trail? Which is not in the DMV sub district. I I'm asking you to use different verbiage if you could, please.
So maybe I could.
I was under the impression that legally DMC cannot fund anything outside of their sub district.
So they're not funding something outside of the sub district, but when you look at the totality of the twenty four million dollar project and the ten million dollars that DMC is contributing. To the totality of delivering on that plan, they reviewed the entire plan inside and outside of the DMC district. Understanding in in a component, and this was raised at the DMCC board by some board members. The connectivity of the project through the through there is connecting people. So again, I I don't know if it would change something, but. They specifically in the vote talked about material changes. And so I can't assume that they wouldn't consider that this was a material change. Especially considering they specifically looked at the entire project, perhaps to get to that larger number. They were looking at connectivity throughout the soldiers field. I was at that meeting. And there were some questions. I can't guarantee you every single person voted for that reason, just like I don't always know all of the rationale. That the city council votes for or against something. But that was raised on April seventeenth. You've talked about it significantly. It was also, I believe, came up in some executive board meetings of DMCC and they reaffirmed that they were concerned that that would be a material change. Again, I don't know if that would change their position about the entire ten million dollars, but connectivity and transportation is a key component of. The investment for the destination medical center and the dollars that are coming. So. I would also just point out from a process and procedural perspective, on April seventeenth, you had a significant. Number of community members during open comments, speaking on multiple sides of this issue and none of the folks that were speaking. In favor of the trail for all of the variety of reasons that they raised, have any ability to come and speak here. About this and probably think that it's continuing to move forward through the park board based on how. All of the conversation occurred and based on how we typically approve projects, approve funding. And then the park board through their charter authority continues to deliver on them. So.
To reiterate, DMC wouldn't have necessarily voted against a change. But it counted as a change that would have had to go back to DMC's board to revote.
I I feel as though my question isn't getting answered.
I think it has been.
Has it been? Okay, okay, thanks. Okay.
I think it has been.
DMC invested with the expectation that that part of the project would exist because it helps connect people to where. DMC's zone exists.
Got it. I got it.
No, no, I'm sorry. We don't speak during meetings. I know you're passionate about this, but we're not.
So then I I guess I have a question. Has the DNR approved this project yet? We were still waiting on that.
No, because the permit for the bridge or or lower trail has not been submitted to them yet. Because again, we've not final designed it yet. That's the next steps is the DNR and Corps of Engineers will be looking at that information.
And so you are not, may I just, I want to clarify something because I think it's getting picked apart here. The bid package that you are considering at the park board is not just. For the soldiers, it's for the Southwest Trail.
Correct. It's it's for the the, a good share of the remaining package. So it's six million dollars plus and. The Southwest Trail is a small component of that, a small part of that.
So can I ask a question? So what I'm hearing is is that asking for the bid for the Southwest Trail to come back is. Like not possible because it's all interconnected. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
It's in, I think, three or four different parts of the trade packages that we've submitted out for bids, yes. So untangling that, we could do that, but again. Why are we bringing back one portion back to city council when the entirety of the package has already been reviewed?
And you might get a bid challenge and you might need to rebid the entire package.
That is correct.
So council stated that it was a priority to move the work forward so we'd be ready, as has been said. So. Everybody just needs to vote how they need to vote, but I. Councilmember Keen, can we wrap this up?
Yeah, again, I'm getting worried here. It said this idea that we're doing this in other business. At eleven forty with nobody knowing we're having this discussion bothers me. It it's some higher level if councilmember Palmer is concerned that. We're not having enough oversight in certain projects. I think that's a generic concern that we should try to address. But I think. If if you were in support of how we voted in April, right now, I think it's imperative that we continue to support that vote and let. That our staff work ahead with the projects as they're going. I, right now, you might say this is a small thing or one week, two week, they can't build anyways. But clearly, we're doing this to change how staff is operating and it's going to slow them down. And one of the reasons we approved back in April was the idea of trying to get this work. Staff is operating and it's going to slow them down and one of the reasons we approved back in April was the idea of trying to get this work done. In the twenty twenty three construction season into, into the twenty twenty three winter. And anything we do right now to be slow and that makes it feel like we're reconsidering decisions that have already been made. And we should not be doing that in other business at eleven forty in the evening. I, I, I was, wanna in, ask my peers to try to vote no on this so that we don't end up. Reversing things that we've already decided.
Yeah. Alright, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Your dual call.
Yep. Clerk Garak? Councilmember Keen?
Nay.
Councilmember Bransford?
Nay.
Councilmember Wall?
Abstain.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Council President Carlson?
Nay. So it's a tie, so motion fails. Alright, is there other business? Councilmember Bransford, did you have something else? Anything else? Alright, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Back, is there a second? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.